Regular meeting, July tenth, uh, twenty twenty-three, and I'm gonna turn on the back of color recording. All right, and if you'll join me by standing for the pledge allegiance.
At the allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you. We'll call.
Commissioner Sharla.
Present.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present.
Commissioner Human.
Present.
Commissioner Chen here, Commissioner Culbertson.
Here.
Yeah, we have a court.
Commissioner Reiser.
Oh, Commissioner Reiser. Here.
Present.
And Commissioner Moore did contact me and will not be attending for this evening. All right, so move on to the adoption of the agenda. Uh, are there any items that people want to change on their agenda?
We've got the agenda as posted.
Okay, support, okay. Uh, motion by Commissioner Human and supported by Commissioner Hyde to adopt the agenda as posted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Communications and correspondence. Um, we did have, um, uh, one, um, from Stein, and also I did email folks, um, an Ann Arbor, uh, water update, and Commissioner Hyde has a comment on the first section of it.
Right, I would like to say that the Debbie Dingell update and the EPA update look to be, um, as up to date as, as the community. But the update on the court action where they talked about the Fourth Amendment to the consent judgment, that was not approved by the courts and we're back to the Third Amendment, and then they're trying to work in, uh, items from the Fourth Amendment into the, legally in, so they're working with government again. But it's, that is not up to date. So when you read that, it, it sounds like everything was approved, but they have had to work in, individually get things in. There were reasons why the township and the city and other townships and other, uh, agencies that were part of the, uh, what were they? They were interveners into the court action rejected it. So.
Thank you for that. Any other communications or correspondence from other folks? All right, then we have no presentations, so we'll move along to public comment. And, uh, this, uh, public comment, uh, would be people wishing to address the planning commission on matters which are not on the public hearing portion, and that would be our blank slate primary, um, conditional use, um, or seek any information on other matters. Such oral presentation shall be limited to three minutes, except a representative or spokesperson from an organization. She'll have five minutes to address the commission. And typically, we start with folks who are in attendance and then move online. Um, is there anyone present who would like to address the planning commission on anything other than, um, the, uh, a public hearing this evening? And see anyone raising their hands online?
Yes, Pat Stein.
All right.
Can I have a little shot?
Pat, we can't hear you yet.
I beg your pardon.
We can hear you now.
Oh, thank you. So I, um, I submitted a letter listing my objections to having a doggy daycare, doggy grooming, um, business located within the grocery store. Um, those of you that didn't have a chance to read it, I will be happy to read it to you, but I can just go through the highlights as to why I object. One thing is, um, yes, the business said that they will have a door for access to the, um, business from the outside, but at the same time, they're not sealing up the doors in the, that are internal to the suite. Mainly because, I guess, the six to eight employees will need to use that door to get into the store to use the restroom. So, um, I don't see why no one else on this panel sees how disgusting that would be. I mean, there's no separate exhaust system on one suite compared to the store. And basically, um, you're going to be letting odors out into the store. And I don't know if you're aware, but when you smell an odor, that's because there's a particle that is being driven to your nose by air. So not only are you smelling it, if you're talking or if you're breathing with your mouth open, you are eating it. Um, I don't know what the plan is, but I know there is a Michigan, um, law that says that dogs should not be present in anywhere, anywhere, any business that either prepares food, sells food, um, or serves food. And Myers Grocery Store is definitely selling food. Um, the other thing is, um, Doug Luhan has okayed this business. He had no objections to it in his paperwork because it does fall under the five acre rule. I'm sorry, but Myers is not the applicant. Myers may have five acres, but the Best Men's Pet Care Incorporated is only going to have seven hundred and thirty-one square feet. So I think that Mr. Luhan needs to look that over again because that, to me, that is in clear violation. Uh, should not have been okayed. So I, I strongly suggest that this application be denied and not move forward at all. Your job is to make decisions that are in the best interest of the residents of Syo. Well, if Syo has a Myers store and residents are not happy with shopping with dogs, um, they're gonna go elsewhere. So I don't consider that to be a good decision if you do move forward with it. So thank you for your consideration and please deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan has his hand raised.
Well, I had a lot of things to say, but then, uh, Pat just, uh, covered ninety percent of them. Uh, well stated, Pat. Um, in addition to that, I mean, and go here from the, uh, if, if you haven't been on Nextdoor, you probably don't know this. But people don't generally pick up after their pets a hundred percent of the time. Um, if someone were to walk from their car to the parking lot and their dog were to urinate or defecate in the parking lot, I guarantee you that out of a hundred people who own dogs, there is a percentage of them that will not stop to clean it up. And even if they do, it's not that easy to clean up on the concrete. Yet we're walking through that into the store. We're walking through the store with that on our feet. We also have the issue of what if a dog decides to relieve itself on the sidewalk approaching the front area? It's also right approaching, yeah, so those, those entrances, the, the proposed entrance is in between the other two Myer, Myers entrances. So if somebody's walking their dog up that sidewalk and their dog lets loose near the entrance. Come on, you telling me that there's gonna be a cleanup crew on hand to prevent somebody from accidentally stepping, stepping? You, you know that the only outcome here that is, the, the, the best case outcome here is that people walk around Myers with dog feces on their feet. And from my perspective, I'll go, I'll go shop elsewhere, which is terrible because aren't we all about, you know, close to home, not burning gas? You know, local, all that good stuff? And now we're talking about driving customers away from Myers because they don't like fecal matter on their feet as they walk through the store. I really hope you deny this. I, the fact that it's even gotten this far just shows the entire community the lack of management we're getting from Carlisle Wortman. This should have never made it this far. We shouldn't have to be on this call to protest this thing. This has been a mistake from the beginning. Please reject it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no other answers.
Move to close the public hearing.
No, public comment.
Public comment.
All right, is there support? Support from, uh, okay. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor of, of closing public comment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and we are closed at, uh, seven eleven. All right, moving on. Um, we do have a, a public hearing this evening, and, um, this is the conditional use for blank slate primary, uh, to allow retail sales. And, uh, just for, um, everyone's, um, convenience, um, typically what we do with public hearings is we have the applicant come up and, um, do a short presentation, um, ask for, um, questions of, of fact from the commissioners, and hear, uh, a summary of Carlisle Wortman's, uh, review. We won't have any engineering review for this one. And then, um, get, uh, feedback from, uh, the public, and then, uh, uh, the, um, commission can choose to deliberate or not. So that's, uh, so with that, um, I'd like to open our public hearing at seven twelve and welcome our applicants. Please come forward and do sign in. Um, there, there'll be a specific, we already did that. Excellent. Thank you very much.
I'm Janice Sigler. My husband Jerry Sigler, we're the owners of Blank Slate Creamery. Um, maybe some of you are familiar with us, I hope. Um, we're located downtown currently and have a store in Brighton. Um, and we're building a production facility in Syo Township. Um, well, build, doing a build out. We've bought an existing space, um, on Jackson Road, and we'd like to use a very small portion of that space, about five percent of it, for retail sales. It will be carryout only of pints and cakes and ice cream novelty type things. Um, we think that there's a little bit of demand on the west side. We often hear from our customers that they don't like to deal with parking downtown. Um, they would come more often if they didn't have to deal with that. So we thought this would be a convenient way. So we're thinking about, um, having them, having the ability to pick up between the hours three P M. and nine P M. Um, probably close to seven days a week. We don't know, we guess, we don't know how, how much demand there will be for it, um, in that location. Um, we currently do online orders and have pickups at our stores currently. So, um, this is a process that's pretty familiar to us and our customers, so. We don't anticipate a lot of traffic because of that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have and.
Where is the location of your facility going to be?
Um, it's at seven eight, seven nine Jackson Road, and that's near Jackson Baker. Um, if you're familiar with where the Eagles
Yeah.
are, it's the front, the building in front of that, so right on Jackson Road.
More close to Baker than here?
Correct. Yep.
And is the production facility already underway?
Yes.
It's producing ice cream?
We are not yet producing ice cream. We will open the first, uh, production facility the first week in August.
First week, couple of weeks. And that'll supply the one in downtown?
It'll supply Ann Arbor, Brighton, and then we'll also be doing wholesale, um, with some local restaurants and small specialty markets.
Other questions of fact?
I do, but I'll wait my turn. Um, what if you wanna have more retail sales? What if the market from Dexter and Syo is such that people come there? Are you, are you thinking big term enough? Are you gonna have to come back to us and say, oh, we wanna do ten percent of our floor space or whatever? I mean.
This is not intended to be a scoop shop. Um, we don't have enough space for that. So the build out is already done. Um, probably close to half of the building is freezer space, and so we just don't have the space for that. It wasn't really intended for, um, a retail outlet.
What if you wanna put a deck or outside seating or something? I, you know, I'm just.
Yeah, we aren't doing scoops, so we won't be doing outside seating. We're only doing pints and prepack, prepackaged items. So it'll definitely be carryaway. Um, we have, we have plenty of space for that in our other two locations, and we're about maxed out.
No, I'm not trying to, you really don't wanna do, I guess, you know, as long as we're here now.
Yes, right, I understand. Yep.
Anything else? Do you have any data right now on approximately, you know, what your peak online order kind of pickup is?
Yeah, so about a little less than four percent of our orders are online. So it's a very small percentage of our sales. And that increases in the fall. I think people like to be home in the evenings, you know? Um, and in the summer, they come and get a scoop and, you know, stand in line and chat with friends. But in the fall and winter, they tend to pick it up and take it home with them, so.
And is there, uh, questions of fact from commissioners? Or is there an opportunity if this comes up? I guess, Commissioner Hyde.
Um, is a follow on to what Commissioner Reiser was saying. When you talked in your letter about limiting your transactions per hour if you reach a certain level, do you have any?
Well, we hope to have at least, you know, six orders per hour in that location. Um, that would be, um, very acceptable to us, and we'd like to not have to staff it to a level greater. Um, as you know, it's hard to find staffing for just about anything these days, so. Um, you know, we, and it's a very small space, so not a lot of people could be working there anyway. Um.
So that's about winter.
So that's about our capacity, um, for what we'd like to do there. It's really just to supplement our wholesale sales and, um, kind of serve that market that is out this direction.
Uh, how many people are gonna work at this facility?
Um, there will be six full-time staff that are doing production only. And then there will be, um, one or two that are doing the retail. Our production staff are there from like seven to three P M. And then the, um, retail part would open at three.
But do you want to ask them what their parking is in case they have?
Well, I think the, the report from Carlisle Wortman.
Addressed that? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, and also if he, if, after we go through that, if you have more questions, certainly can raise those.
Right, right. Page four.
Yeah. All right, Laura.
Well, as, um, Ms. Sigler said.
Yep.
Um, their property is located at seventy-eight, seventy-nine Jackson Road. It is a multi-tenant building, and they're gonna occupy Suite C, um, which is about thirty-two hundred square feet. And they, um, they, their, their production use, um, since this is, um, zoned I one, limited industrial is a permitted use. However, retail sales up to ten percent of the retail area are allowed as a conditional use, which is why we're here this evening. And as the applicant said, uh, they're requesting one hundred and seventy-eight square feet, which is five point five percent of the space to be used for retail. And in our review, we note that the currently in use, uh, is, you know, adequate, uh, for, and, and and is the same as the, the surrounding area. Um, it's also master planned, uh, consistently with I one zoning. So the manufacturing uses is right on, um, what we already allow. When we look at the conditional use standards, we look at whether it's harmonious and compatible. They're using an existing site. There are no, uh, site modifications proposed. Um, we did have some questions about parking, and the applicant provided a supplement, which is also in your packet, about the other tenants in the building and their very minor amount of parking that's needed, and it probably is offset a little. Um, if the retail sales are only gonna be in the afternoon, evening time, those uses probably, um, are, are probably at eight to five, um, type uses as well. Um, she also provided some additional information about delivery timing and frequency, um, because those were questions that we had just to ensure that deliveries weren't, um, encumbering parking spaces or making the affordability difficult. And it looks like all of those items have been addressed. Um, based on that information, um, we would recommend approval of the, the five point five percent retail space for this, for this use. Okay, I've been answering questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I think this one, yeah, is for Mrs. Krebs. Um, I know this is a conditional use, so, and it's already constructed. Is this in an era where we would like to have sidewalks out front? And if so, is it appropriate for a conditional use to ask for the sidewalks at this time? Or do we wait until a site plan comes in?
I do not look at, I mean, no, that was not part of, um, as, as part of this conditional use approval, because no site modifications are required, a site plan would not be required at this time. And so that's something that we have to look into. I'm not aware of whether there are sidewalks along there or, or planned at this time.
What about, could, could we ask for a bicycle park? Is there bicycle park at this site? Could ask for a bike group or something if they're gonna ride and grab ice cream?
Yeah, that might be.
So I.
Again, this is takeaway, remember? So I'm here after.
Yep.
Curated by.
Right, and it's ice cream, so it is gonna melt.
And it's Jackson Road, and I don't.
I don't even know if there's a likely.
I'm happy to do that, pipe just right away, you know, right outside. How about to hang it for it?
There are no sidewalks in the area.
Exactly.
Zero. Not in our place or any adjacent. So there's no way to get to a sidewalk, even if you put one in.
That's how they start, and you have to have a link.
Right, but we didn't make modifications like that to the building.
Probably, you don't ask for them.
Any other questions on the review? Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Reiser.
It, it, it's really close to Baker, right?
It's about, would you say it's a quarter mile?
Maybe a quarter mile west of Baker.
Yeah.
Because I know we've got, we've approved some stuff near Baker in Jackson, and there's sidewalks there, and there's the new housing that's just east of Baker. I'm just telling you, sidewalks are gonna come someday down there. And, and, uh, I don't know if it's an appropriate request to ask for a, uh, conditional use to put a sidewalk in, you know what I mean? Uh, you know? But, but, but density's coming down there, down there, and development's coming down there. And, you know, I.
It could be a commitment at a certain, when requested by the township, like we've done in other areas that don't have sidewalks at this point.
No, would that be a tenant, like these people?
No, I, I appreciate that too, it's like.
Just asking.
It's about nine hundred and ninety feet from the nearest sidewalk on people's maps.
Do you know drive?
Yeah.
And are you renting or did you purchase?
We purchased thirty-two hundred square feet of that building.
So it's a portion of?
Yes, the building is.
Twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah. So there's another owner that owns the other eighty percent.
Right.
Okay.
We'll open it up for discussion among commissioners. Oh, public first.
Public hearing.
Sorry.
Yes, I know we opened in public hearing.
It, it's open.
I will be open again.
We didn't close it.
We need it.
So we'll go to our, yes, we're open. Uh, Jonathan is raising his. All right, Jonathan.
So that'll public comment.
Hi, this is, excuse me, hi, this is Jonathan Greenberg, uh, longtime resident and, uh, longtime seventh week camper. I'd just like, okay, good. Hey Jerry, how you doing?
Good, good.
I would just like to say, not having any knowledge of the Sieglers or anything about their family or the last thirty years' history with a great, wonderful place in northern Michigan, I would like to encourage you to approve this. I'm done, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take up time, but yeah, definitely approve this.
Special the second week. Then I'll, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, so move.
Okay, so, um, Reiser and Vermont? Um, any comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's closed at seven. Yeah, seven thirty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, sorry. Don't have my app.
So I think my computer is closer.
Oh, my computer's so off. I can't tell time by it. Okay, um, then moving on to discussion.
Just a general comment, and I think this would be great to have down the screen. I'd like to probably take up one of those six per hour time or two, just to check it out.
Um, what about the hours? We need to, I, I see a, I, I see a model motion, but have we talked about hours?
Uh, I think they proposed three, well, the retail hours being three to nine, seven days a week.
We need to have that in the model motion?
Yes. I would think.
Yeah, it's part of the, uh, submissions, and they need it.
Yeah, like, what they submit and what we approve, I, how, how close, which controls, the application or what we put on this record and vote for?
Oh, hell.
Could you, could you?
Yeah.
Okay. It would be the application unless you specify in the, in the commissioner's. So if they match, I mean, it doesn't hurt to make that those hours part of your motion, but typically, you would only make that part of your motion if you disagree or reduce those.
And I guess my only concern, we're, so we're, we're approving it up to ten percent potentially, even though they only want to use five percent right now, correct? But we're, it, it, I see ten percent in the model motion. And, and, and the hours are three to nine. Cor- correct? Did I get that right?
Yeah.
And, 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 and do we, might there be, if they wanna go from like noon to nine or from ten A M. to nine, you know? Do they need to come back to us? And if so, can't we just add the hours now so we don't have to have this in the future? And they don't have to be open that long, but, you know? I, I mean, that's just my thought, is to like, be as broad as, as reasonable, even though they might not wanna use it right now. But in the future, they don't have to come back here to do what we probably would have approved in the July of twenty twenty-three anyways. That's just my thinking. But I don't know how you feel about it, and I don't know how all the applicants feel about it.
I like ice cream for breakfast.
Do you anticipate wanting to, eh?
This is a Michigania. So, uh, that, that's all, that's all I, that, that's just my. Yeah.
And, and while the sidewalk, I think, is a good point, um, I do feel like, because it's only a portion of that building, I don't, you know, I don't know.
No, no site plan, I feel a little awkward about it.
Yeah, I think it, it seems. Yeah.
It does say, we anticipate offering daily pickup hours of three to nine. It doesn't say that this is what we want, so I'm just.
We could do, I, I would be okay with like noon to nine just because of some of the morning deliveries and that kind of thing.
Will that interfere? I, I didn't see the delivery. To tell you the truth, I must have pulled mine down before.
Oh, yeah, it was a late add, I think.
So, um, when are the deliveries? Somebody.
Yeah, some of them are later.
Uh, it says, our primary deliveries are regular and predictable. Uh, it says our primary deliveries are regular and predictable. Gurnsey Farm Dairy delivers dairy ingredients Tuesdays and Fridays between nine and noon. Frog Holler delivers produce on Wednesdays, eleven to one. Chef Source, Chef Source delivers purees and other ice cream ingredients on Thursdays between ten and noon. Gordon's Food Service delivers sugar, milk solids, and restaurant supplies on Wednesdays, ten to noon. And Sewn Linen delivers towels and floor mats on Thursdays between eleven and one. So it sounds like everything's between nine and one for their delivery. So it would not currently interfere with what they're proposing further.
Right, and how big are their trucks, how big are your trucks that go out?
Our truck is the size of a large pickup truck. It's a dual wheel pickup truck.
Insulated.
Yeah.
Or a three fifty with a freezer box in the back.
So so. I mean, I would be okay, in in is nine PM, they're gonna be there that late for retail at nine PM?
Well, if there's business, I guess we don't know, you know, how it might be earlier.
I would think that.
Have business.
You might have more, I'd be okay with ten AM to nine PM. And if people don't come at ten in the morning because it's too early for ice cream or pickup or whatever, but I'm thinking during the holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas and things when they're picking up the Christmas cakes and the Christmas ice cream and the holiday this and holiday that, they might wanna get an earlier start on it. That's, you know, your Meyer, you're going down there or whatever. I'm just, so I'm inclined to be as broad as as reasonable, so we don't have to have them back here again, uh, un- unless it inconveniences other tenants or things like that. That's just my thinking.
I believe if we don't put it in the motion though, then they are not restricted by what's in their narrative. The narrative is just form information.
Yeah, we anticipate that.
If it's not in here, they basically have, they can do whatever's in the conditional land use ordinance.
Is it twenty four seven? But we might not want that, we might not want twenty four seven. Yes.
And you gotta remember, they might not be, there could be a future ice cream shop there as well. Later, whatever.
I'm gonna propose ten AM to nine PM. And if someone wants to tweak it up or down, I they we're not compelling them to sell something at ten in the morning, but they should be allowed to do so if if they've got staffing and wanted to.
So I sense we have a motion.
Yeah.
Or did you have another?
Well, no, I think that we probably wanna build a little bit more on the motion or what you want to motion first, and then we add the conditions after.
You can discuss it now, go ahead.
Well, I think that on that same vein, we also should probably specify that this is pickup only. Right, that we're not, this can't be a scoop shop. This can't be a.
Cones. Right, no cones.
Right, which the applicant's not asking for, but if it's not in the motion, I don't. Uh, I think they would still be allowed to do that.
So it's pickup and, I think they said pickup and in the parking lot, handoff. I forget how you put it. So there's that, but if you wanted to say.
It's a pickup only, I think it's.
But I mean, isn't that what retail sales are? I mean, I I don't think we envision onsite consumption.
Well, retail sales include onsite if you allow, okay, okay, retail sales.
Okay.
I I would like a bike hoop if I could get a bike hoop in. I think if it's not for the, for the customers, I think maybe an employee may rather bite here to work for it, so. And if I could, I I honestly would like to see maybe a note, but I don't know if we can do that because they're just a portion of the.
The building.
Of the building, that there's other four or five residents that would put a note on that site plan states that that a request of the township, the sidewalks can be put in a future date, but I don't know if we can do that in this situation.
I I feel like that's a little overestimating because it's not the whole building.
I'm all in favor, but yes, yeah, I'm just trying to look out for the future.
I I'd like to encourage them to put in a bike hoop. I don't know if I wanna.
If you think that would be valuable to the community for whatever reason, we're happy to do it.
Let's do it.
Let's do it, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anything else?
And I guess what I'm concerned about is what happens if people go there, they get a pint and they sit outside on a table and a chairs or on a bench or something, and they start eating it onsite. And and then it it comes to pass that we should have just allowed them to have some sort of onsite consumption. Or maybe they come back for that, I mean.
Yeah, I guess people could eat their fast food.
You you and I getting a pint of ice cream ain't that big a deal for me. Yeah, and so so I'm I'm just trying to anticipate what the market's gonna do and whether they adjust to the market or we should have kind of anticipated what people might do and plan for it now. I don't know what that is.
I don't think, I think, this is my opinion of that. I think it it's not a big deal, a person every once in a while decides to consume the pint right onsite. If it becomes a thing where people are hanging out, then you really want them to come back and provide space and a nice environment for that, if if that's gonna be promoted. That's my thought, and they're not planning on doing any real site improvements at this point.
Yeah, we're saying pickup only retail sales, so I think that if it's found that it's not just.
Addresses it.
But I mean, you do before, sit outside, outside establishment, eat a pint of ice cream.
Apparently Commissioner Riser does.
No, the answer is, hell, yeah, they do, if you see Blank Slate in Ann Arbor. That is, yes, yes, abundantly, abundantly.
Uh, cones.
Cones, yes, but I don't.
Pints? What are you laughing at?
Do people eat pints in you, in our store, I've been there many times.
But they don't eat them generally, and we don't, we won't have any tables for anyone.
Okay, all right, no, I, and I'm not trying to encourage you, I'm just trying to.
I was just trying to the behavior.
To to zone for it, that's all.
Yeah, I don't see that behavior.
Yeah, I think you you'd wanna create a nice space and that would be more landscaping and all that kinda stuff, so. Yeah, okay.
No, I I get it, but.
But I won't stop you.
No, but no, I'm just, I I'm just trying to think what, oh gee, we should have done this then, but, you know, we'll just call nine one one if we see a mini ice cream.
All right, all right, so I think we're ready for a motion.
I I would move that, based on the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting and the discussion therein, the planning commission finds that the site plan and related information received by the township meets the required standards and findings for the conditional land use and recommends approval. Specifically, it is found that the following required standards and findings found in section thirty six dash two twenty four of the zoning ordinance have been demonstrated by the applicant. A, it will be harmonious and in accordance with the objectives and regulations of this ordinance. B, it will be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in the vicinity. C, that the the proposed use will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police and fire protection, drainage ways, refuse disposal, and the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to prove adequately, provide adequately any such service. D, that the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring uses, persons, property, or the public welfare. E, that the proposed use will not create additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. F, it will be compatible with the township's adopted general development plan. And further, the planning commission recommends that the following conditions be placed on the subject conditional land use, that pickup retail sales only be allowed from ten AM until nine PM, seven days a week, and that the applicant install a bike hoop in in front of the building, and that the retail space be limited to ten percent of the gross floor area.
Second.
You have a a motion by Commissioner Riser and a second support by Commissioner Hyde. Further discussion? Go for a vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Human.
Yes.
Commissioner Riser.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes, Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Thank you. For picking up those ice cream cakes.
Yes, so that we're clear on the process. You're recommending to the board approval of this, so.
Right.
Yeah, then they're the final.
Yeah, maybe not.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate you coming and doing it in Syo. It it supports our local foods.
It is a food.
It is a food. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to our unfinished business, and we have condition we use twenty three zero zero seven, best friend's pet care. And we do have the applicant here. Please come on up. And if you'd like to, I believe you added a a site plan for our requests.
Yeah, approve site plan for Myers. I can answer some of those other questions too in regards to.
To the ventilation and.
Yeah, so our use requires that all our air is exhausted one hundred percent. There is no, wouldn't get approved them with amplicarons. So all our air basically is supplied by our T U from exhausted to move in all environments.
And so, but sorry, just to be perfectly clear, none of the air from the uh, from the, from the dog daycare is being pushed into.
Yeah, can't recycle it all, it's all exhausted.
All exhausted, so it's basically like a a negative pressure room. Yes, everything.
Yeah, our use wouldn't get approved, you can't be circulated.
Right.
In recovery.
Go ahead.
So last those conversation about, you know, the pet relief station and, you know, location. I did not have an approved location for Myers, so I'm back and I got that from them. You know, and additionally talking to them, they have fifty one locations with an operating vet, which is very similar to our use, glass door in the front, enters through the front. And they have no, there's no of those pet relief stations, any, you know, Myers being a, I think they're a pretty good retailer, pretty good operator. You know, I'm sure they're, they wouldn't do it if they had issues with, you know, with animal waste and and that thing abundantly in their stores. But I was surprised to hear they had fifty one of those, I was unaware of that, in their in their chain for six days.
Okay, yeah, and there was a. Anyone have an approximate distance of how far? And I'm I'm just looking at the designated pet station and there isn't even a sidewalk to it.
There is, it's just far left. Is this something that you'd say you worked, you did work it out with Meyer? Because that didn't appear, at least I didn't see it on the drawing. Before our letter.
It it was, um. It there was a.
Cause it's it's a site plan showing that Myers located.
Drawing, but it doesn't, I I was saying Myers approval.
Oh.
You know, the coordination with Meyer, I mean, having a red dot on here and saying where the location.
Yeah, that's.
That's driving in Myers.
Meyer did designate that. The other thing that we'd asked for was similar setups than other Myers or. Walmart was the other.
Other retailers have.
Other retailers. And so I don't see any information in here that shows how they did it. You just said that they don't have relief stations in some of the other stores.
They they don't.
So this would be breaking new ground, is that fulfilling us?
For Myers, yes. We have, we have two of them in in process, and this is the third one in Meyer.
Said Jan, Commissioner Culberson. Relief station location is across one, two, three, four, five, at least six aisles of double wide car parking. If you go to that, I would assume you'd wanna park as close to the front of the stores you put the, you know, the the glass door, and you'd wanna go right in. But if your dog wants to go, you either drive or walk over, and then you'd have to walk back. And that does go down the sidewalk past a lot of people.
I I think that's a pretty non-functional spot.
That would not be where I'd take my dog necessarily.
Have you, you've said you got three of the facilities.
Uh, two in Myers.
Oh, in a Myers, okay.
Wister, Ohio, and Elkhart, Indiana.
And is the pet relief area this far away?
In neither of those, they don't have it.
Where were they, where are they located again, sorry, tell me.
Elkhart, Indiana, and Wister, Ohio.
Wister is.
Yeah, I I understand, yeah, it is far away. There's there's really no close area, you know, we talked about it last time. The closest berm was ten, ten parking spaces if you're directly in front of our location. Right, we were aware of that when we were asking. You know, you're absolutely right.
So, I'm sorry, Elkhart and where's the other place? I don't want to say. Worcester, exactly.
I'm sorry.
Hard to hear in our guest. In those locations, because as I understand, this is a kennel, right? This is a.
It's it's doggy daycare, right, moving all year, there's no boarding, no overnight, or eight to six.
But I assume people bring their dog in.
Yes.
First thing in the morning and pick them up in the evening.
Uh, sometimes, sometimes they they leave the dog just while they're shopping. Sometimes you leave the dog for half a day for socialization, and sometimes, you know, they're getting their dog groomed. You know, maybe for three hours, I think.
And for those longer periods of time, I mean, does the does the staff take the dogs out?
No, they never leave our space. Our we our building basically is built with sealed welded rubberized flooring. There's floor drains throughout, and we we pick up the waste, just like we do in our full size centers. So it's not like we take a dog out to relieve it, once it's in our building, it's in our building.
Well, question. You've heard a lot from all of us, last call, this meeting, public comments, et cetera, et cetera, about the distance. And so no no point repeating that. I think let's hear from you, what do you have to say in defense about the fact that these, the dogs, the distance from the car, the waste along, uh, along along the way. I mean, I've been on the geography of Meyer, I know it very well. I know it for twenty years now, whatever time, it's been there, whatever. So we have heard a lot about this time and again, so let's kinda hear from you, Anna. So I'm very curious to know what your views are rather than repeating.
Well, I think ultimately, I mean, being a responsible pet owner, you know, you're supposed to curb your dog, pick it up, you know, take care of that, you know.
That's the assumption you're going with.
Say that one time.
That is, that is your general assumption.
It it is, right, in a perfect world, in a perfect, in a perfect world, right? In in regards to, you know, the pet waste station that we are stating we're going to supply, you know, managing that and making sure that the pet bags are there, that the waste is picked up, you know, that would be our responsibility, I totally, totally understand.
Parking lot.
Well, in in that parking area, correct.
The pet owners would know how to react, how to reach for those supplies, how to use them for cleaning. That's kind of your assumption.
Yes, I mean, once again, if you're, you have a dog and the dog goes to the bathroom, you you should pick it up. Most people have the bags on there.
Got it, got it, okay, that's your position, okay, thank you. Are there others curious to know?
No, in inside our building, that's a different conversation.
Yeah, oh.
I have a quick.
I, yeah, do you?
Do you, is, this is, we provided, correct, right, sir? What's your name again?
Keith.
Keith, Keith, I'm John Riser.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
See you again.
Yes. So Keith, um, this is the overhead, and there's the Myers structure right there.
Yes, sir.
Where where is your entrance going to be on that drawing?
You want me to come?
Yeah, sure. It looks like, it looks like it's over here, it's like the top right.
Yeah, north of us.
Right?
Correct.
So if you're on the northeast side, and you're proposing a northwestern, is that, is that the?
Right, right there.
Right there, right, yeah, I'm just looking at, like, right there.
Yeah, somewhere.
Yeah, right, yeah. So it's northeast, and and then on the, I don't know. So it's, it's northeast and, and then on the, I don't know, this, can we put this up on the?
I don't have.
Okay, all right, it's, it's top.
You have the back.
And, and, and this, it's on the, the grassy areas on the northwest, correct? So here's my thinking, and I don't want to disparage pet owners, I've been a pet owner, but I see people generally trying to park close to your building and walk in, and then I worry about nature calling. And maybe they'll pick up the defecation, but what about the urination? So, so I like, I was hoping to say, hey, Myers is gonna let us put in a ten by twenty foot grassy area somehow. Or they're gonna close off a couple of parking spots and we're gonna put in grass or something there and then we're gonna park there and it's gonna be like a world's smallest dog park, just kidding on the dog park, or something, something natural area so that, you know, it could go down and natural, so I just worry that, and I don't want to disparage you, or you're gonna do your level best in your signage, but how do we prevent people from parking close to convenient? Close and convenient, and then the dog just not doing what dogs do, number one or number two. Um, they're gonna pick up for a number two, hopefully knock on wood, but they're not gonna do it for a number two. And that's where the people got the shopping carts and like, I want to approve this one, I really do, but I don't know that I'm there yet speaking for me. I, I, it's a creative use, it's something that must be needed, cause Myers and you wouldn't be doing it if the market didn't call for it. But I just don't know how we deal with pet waste, especially going into a grocery store where food is served, as people have pointed out. Yeah, that, that's just my thinking. So if you're gonna assuage my concerns that that's not gonna happen, I'm open-minded, but that's where I am right now.
I understood.
Also, at any given time during the course of a year, you will get to park close to the building or very far away or somewhere in between.
I appreciate that, yeah.
So statistically, there's no guarantee of.
First of all, sir. But you're not gonna head. I wanna, I wanna fight it. Not gonna head for the upper, you know, the northwest corner of the parking lot for the dog relief station on purpose. Unless you know it's there, you're not even gonna know it's there.
And then you're, you're crossing, even if you park close to the dog relief station and then get in the car and take your dog over.
You use a shopping cart, obviously.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I tend to agree with you, John, but.
I have a question for Carla Warpin.
Yes.
The comment was made in the public hearing about the five acres required for the conditional use of a dog kennel. Is that what, the conditional use that's listed that's the closest that was found? And would that supplement with the square footage of the actual facility that's being occupied? Be what we apply that requirement to, or do we get to apply it to all Meyer? I mean, like I could see, the reason for having a minimum area for a dog kennel would be to allow for some outdoor activity like such as this. And yet, when you put it into a small cubicle in a retail sales area, you don't have five acres for the dogs.
So there's kind of two things that come into play here. One, this facility is part of Meyer, which is what the total acreage is taken from. So even though they're encumbering a portion of Meyer, the lot area requirement has been met because Meyer encompasses more than Meyer. And this is part of that.
Lot is a part of Meyer.
They're located in the Meyer, in the Meyer facility. So, but also, like you said, the second part of that is we are using a use that is, this dog, a daycare, doggy daycare use is not a use listed in the law. So a commercial kennel is the closest category, which is why that, why there is that five acre. So there's, a commercial kennel is different than a doggy daycare and we understand that, but that's just the closest use that we have.
So since we're considering the entire Meyer site as counting towards this five acre requirement for the kennel, that means that we would be approving the entire Meyer building for use as a kennel if they wanted to do that?
No.
Well, how can we use that?
They have requested a certain portion of Meyer. That's what you're reviewing. If you were to approve the pet relief station, no matter where it is on Meyer's property, that's within them plus five acres. So, no, I mean, when, when a conditional use application comes, they have to make some very specific stand, you know, requests. And that's what you're reviewing. You're not saying that anywhere on Meyer's property, you're not allowed, allowed this use. You're saying in this space, in this tenant space, we are allowing this use. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Chang.
I've got a couple of questions, I think. Let me just first, you said there's fifty-one of these in Myers across.
No, no, but.
Those are vets.
Meyer has a, has a vet.
Okay. If, if they had issues with the vets, as people are bringing their pets in, if you've heard any feedback as far as waste problems?
I have not, and that was, I was surprised, right? Especially where they don't use anything like a stand or a bag or a signage, anything outside. Cause that, cause that was sort of the, the premise of the conversation. You know, what are you talking about was is, you know, the board wants to take a look at, you know, an exact location in your field for this pet relief station.
Will, will Myers then or the, the pet care, will you have like baggies and signage out there that owners must, you know, clean up waste? That you'll have a kind of waste station, maybe just with baggies or something?
Well, that, that's what this is.
Okay. Well, not, I'm not saying over in the corner where it's showing. I'd rather see something that's even closer to the shopping, the parking lot. I think it's more realistic that you're gonna park there at the closest point. You're gonna take your, your, your pet in there and then that's where that, those issues are gonna happen. So at least there should be some baggies in those first couple of aisles or something, or some signage there that states, you know, there's a waste disposal, there's baggies there. Please keep it cleaned up after your pet instead of walking, you know, ten aisles over. I don't, I don't think that is very practical. And, and then I would follow up with, are the pet care employees, you know, if there is waste either before their shift or after their shift, is there, are they going to clean, if they see waste, you know, going out to their vehicles? If they're required to pick it up, is there anything, you know, with your employees that may be able to help here?
I'm sure they'll, I mean, I'm saying that from my perspective, right? And, you know, so you gotta take that with the greatest of, you know, they, they're, they love animals and that's what they do. You know, will they be out there every hour picking up waste? Probably not, quite frankly, but if they see it in front of our center, they certainly. It's, your second point in regards to the signage, closest to our building. You know, I asked Myers where it would be approved and that was the spot I got. I could certainly go back to them and ask them, you know, if there would be a second, second location for signage and baggage, but that's what was approved. Yeah.
Moving away from this thing about dog waste, which we have dwelled upon quite a bit now, what about safety? Some owners are able to hold on to their dogs pretty nicely, others are not often. Little girls often struggle with big dogs. I see that all the time happening in my subdivision. Do I want to go to Meyer where a dog kind of, I shouldn't even thought attack, certainly tried to lick me in a friendly way. Let's put it in a, in a moderate fashion. Do you really want it? And I personally don't like animals. I donate to any animal causes every month. I send donations, uh, uh, every month to the Humane Society of whatever that is.
Yeah, really.
But, yeah, I think, yeah.
Every month.
Right, 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 right. Exactly true, one in the national, anyway. I, I, I send money because I like to do it, but beyond that, I have no interest in pets or animals. Nor do I have the time, but anyway, that's a personal, but I'm sure there are other people like me too. But more importantly, do we want dogs in a crowded place like the Meyer entrance? Think about it. I mean, if there was a private entrance at the back, like near the garden center, you know, if you guys are familiar with Meyer, there's a garden center. There's a parking lot there, kind of semi-private parking lot kind of feeling, then it's a different story altogether. Here we're talking the west side, which is as important as the east entrance. Uh, you go into the pharmacies through this entrance normally, whatever, whatever. So it's not exactly very congenial, I think. I mean, it's, the whole thing is not, don't add up. It may add up very well in a different Meyer altogether, which has a different structure, different.
Entrance.
Entrance, like a semi-private entrance, like, like I mentioned, like I visualized a moment ago, garden center entrance, that kind of stuff. Yeah, absolutely. This is the main entrance there. This is one of the two main entrances, period. There's no two ways about it. Uh, when you go for your pneumonia shot or whatever, uh, flu shot, this is how you enter. So it's as important, it's not a sign entrance. So anyway, just wanted to kind of take the topic, discussion away from the waste and kind of bring this element into the picture. Because if I'm thinking this way, there are other people who also maybe think the same way and, you know, want animals hanging around. But forget the waste for a moment, but yeah, that's pretty much.
I think in, in response to that comment, is there people, certainly, you know, who, who don't like animals. But I mean, if you look at, you know, like, let's say Petco or that's our Dr. Supply Home Depot, where they're in shopping centers and there's dogs going in and out all day.
Yeah, dogs waiting out.
Those, those, yes, those retail folks encourage dogs to come in.
They do.
They do.
Just, just.
No, that's a good point of view.
Other thoughts?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to vote no, which I don't like doing, uh, uh, because if there was a spot where there could be better parking near the entrance, that's gonna have something, that's gonna have a waste area, that's not gonna be problematic for all of Syo Township as they shop there. I, 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 I don't want Meyer shoppers to have to pay the price of unsanitary conditions because some of your customers, their dogs just can't help themselves from either defecating or urinating. That's where I am on this. I feel bad about it. I really do. I want you to succeed. I wish there were someplace in Syo that this could work. And, you know, I don't see this as that place in its current concrete and asphalt configuration, but that's just me.
I'm there too.
I'm inclined to agree with you, Commissioner Reiser.
Then we will entertain a motion.
I'm okay tabling it or I'm, I'm okay denying it, but I don't know what.
Well, it's a recommendation.
If we deny it, they can say, well, we gotta get something together before it goes to the full board. And maybe they've got this great new system where they replace things or they build something up or whatever.
If we, if we.
Recommend.
Rejection.
Yeah.
It still goes to the full board.
Correct.
Yeah, if we don't make a recommendation, that, that, do this again.
Yeah.
Proposal as written, I think I have to vote now.
I, I'm inclined that I'm, I'm in favor of this. I'm gonna vote yes. And I, it sounds like this may not get the approval recommendation. Shall I state that if it's going to die, but even in the motion to state that I'd like another waste station or something that's closer to the entrance with baggies and signage? I know, I know Myers is gonna go for it, but, you know, I'm inclined to vote for it, but, you know, under a certain condition.
If we put it in the motion, it would go to the board and they could see what it was without having to go through the whole recording.
Yeah, you could, you could just say that.
Yes, it could be in the minutes.
It could be part of the, I mean, I sense that it's more of a denial.
Yes, I'm sensing that too.
But you could say, because there is not a waste station, you could say, near the entrance.
Near the entrance.
And, and concern over, yeah, I, I think we could, you know, add some things in there about what the concerns are. Okay. Jan, can I just? Yes. Before you vote, you might want to ask the applicant if he would prefer a table or a denial. Uh, maybe he would like to go back and ask Meyer if there is a closer. It's up, that would be up to you, whether you want to postpone action one more time or if you prefer them to continue the motion, taking act, making a recommendation to the.
So I'm, I'm not versed in either of those options. So what, what does that give me? Cause I would certainly go back to Myers and ask those questions. I'm not, I'm not sure if, if a second, let's just say the second bagging station closer to this thing, you know, if that would satisfy John's, you know.
It probably, it probably wouldn't. I'm worried about urination.
It probably would or wouldn't.
On concrete, it probably would not.
Right, so that.
I'm not gonna say, here, dog, be in this baggie. I, I just think it's gonna happen on time. They're gonna void on concrete and asphalt. Cause that's what I'd do if I were.
Right in front of money. So, so I guess, can I ask one more question? I don't want to. So, you know, John, if, if I even had the first parking space closest to our building tore up, put in canine grass, you know, which percolate to the raid, we'd monitor it, that's, I still couldn't guarantee you that from here to our door, that a dog wouldn't urinate. I, I just, you know.
No, I, I, I understand that. I, I understand that, but like, and I'm not saying you're gonna get expected mom parking or dog parking and then like, and, and then, but I would think that if a dog is given the grassy area, they're gonna take care of their business first there. If, if they void right, right when they get out of the car, I think that they're less likely to do so on the way into the facility. Maybe I'm, I'm no dog expert, by the way, but that's just, you know, if I'm off base, tell me, folks. But I, 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 I want there to.
Dogs go where the dogs go.
And now we gotta be able to park next to that.
Or near there. I, near there, near, near there, near there. So I'm trying to figure out if, if, even if I were to get that miraculously from Myers, you know, would that satisfy the board to get to the next step? Cause we'd still have the person who parked two, two aisle. An aisle down because it's a busy, busy holiday season and we're getting dogs groomed and such and such. That probably wouldn't relieve that concern of yours. I guess that's, no pun intended.
I, I just think it's the location of the, of, of that space and it being so prominent in the front of Meyer.
Speaking for myself only, it's gotta be significantly closer, it's gotta be fairly close to where your, your entrance is, a- and so that it has access to cars in the vicinity so they can use it. And it's gotta be marked as such and then clients have to partner there and use it. So it's, it's just, it's gotta be part and parcel of, of, of the existence of this business at this site. For me, I can, I don't speak for Jeff, Bob, Chris, Jen, forgot your first name.
Chris.
Gosh, thanks. But that's just for me.
It's a good conversation for me to, I'm trying to.
No, I know, man.
I, I don't want to go back and say, okay, we're gonna get another second sign. I come back another month again. And okay, the second sign's great, but I can't guarantee the dog from here to there still will urinate and kind of thing, so.
My, my concern, I mean, my concern is that I just feel like right smack between the two entrances, it's just, it, it could work if it wasn't smack in the front of, of Meyer where you have a lot of conflict of, of people and animals and.
Really.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right, right across from where he, they're planning, where they'll make a hole in the wall, obviously, there, there isn't one right now, is the, one of the parking areas. If Meyer grants that, that area, grass, everything, and all they have to do is walk across the road, which of course still can be uh, dogs in, uh, whatever, but that may be an ideal situation. But what's the guarantee? Meyer can even give that parking area.
Well, that would be a tabling, if, if you thought that, that would be an acceptable option. I, I just put it in a different spot.
Yeah, I think a different spot.
I think it's.
Now, or maybe Menards has a space or maybe Lowe's has, so maybe somebody else has some space close to grass and parking. Uh, you know, I, I'm, you know. You know, like the back of the building looks like, gee, look at all the grass in the back, that'd be perfect. But, you know, I don't know if that's an aisleway back there or if that's the freezer space back there or storage space back there or no.
It looks like there's a property line back there.
Oh, I don't care.
Oh, you mean the.
Maybe there's, I, I'm just saying, maybe, maybe there's grass on the garden center side, you know what I mean? I, you know, I.
Yeah, rather than the food side.
It's a five acre parcel. I would think that we gotta scratch our heads and try to do something better where we have an entrance that, that you're gonna have parking where the dogs can void and it's right near the.
I mean, the other thing, we could be very specific in this place with the proposed, you know, pet relief location. So if there was a different kind of proposal that came back, it, it wouldn't necessarily. So if there was a different kind of proposal that came back, it, it wouldn't necessarily, um, you know, if it was in a different location in Meyer, it is, it's this location with the pet station, et cetera.
Near the front.
Right, yeah, between those entrances, yeah.
Yeah, but this is the only place in Meyer which is available for renting. There's no other place.
That's okay.
Ever was.
We can get that.
Yeah, so.
So we're evaluating what is put in front.
Yeah.
Because we, we were saying.
So I think we're. All right, we'll entertain a motion once we've worked on that. I see. Commissioner Hyde.
Okay, we're gonna do this as a combined effort.
Okay.
Uh, conditional, this is for conditional land use. Twenty-three zero zero seven Best Friends Pet Care to establish a commercial kennel. Based on the information received from the applicant reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds the site plan and related information received by the township fails to meet required standards and findings for conditional land use and recommends denial. Specifically is found that the following requires, do I need to go through all the steps here or just list the ones that, just list our objections?
I think it would be helpful to make sure the findings of fact are represented.
Each one of them. Specifically is found that the following requires standards and findings found in section thirty-six, two, two twenty-four of the zoning ordinance have been demonstrated by the applicant.
Have not.
Have, uh, yeah, there wasn't a choice here. It is found that the following have not been demonstrated by the applicant. Well, some of them will be. So have been demonstrated by the applicant as follows. A will. Okay, my objection is very specific, but where it fits into here, I, I need to be careful.
Could I offer a suggestion? I think it falls under B. It will not be compatible with the natural environment existing.
And I thought it all fell under D.
I think it could fall under both of those.
So you're, are we saying that it will be harmonious in accordance with the objectives and regulations?
I think it will not be, I, I think it will not be because of, will not be compatible. And D, it will not, it will be detrimental. I think you negate.
Yes.
Negate what you would have.
But in all other, in B, I see that, that is correct, will not be compatible and indeed will be detrimental.
Right.
But in A.
I don't know that you need to even speak about A, C, E, or F.
That's what I was asking.
I don't, I don't know that you need to touch on them all. I would touch on only those that you think aren't met. That's my, that's my opinion only.
That's where I was headed to begin with.
That's what, that's what it seems to be agreeing with.
So you can say have not been demonstrated and we don't do A and we don't do C and we don't talk to E and we don't talk to F, we just talk to B, C and D. Does that make sense?
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
Both in dog, right?
Yep. Uh, so backing up, have, have been demonstrated by the applicant as follows. Will not be compatible with the natural environment existing in future land uses in the vicinity. And that the proposed use will be detrimental, hazardous or disturbing to the existing and future neighboring uses persons' properties or, or public welfare. Public welfare.
And I would just add, due to the conflict between, um, food and, um.
So we can get specific about what, what the detrimental aspects are.
Yes, yes. The conflict between food and.
Animal waste.
And, uh, animal waste, yeah.
Having the potential for animal waste with a pet care, what is it called? Sanitation, pet release station location, uh, being so far away in the parking lot. And the likelihood that there will be occasions when dogs will be walked along and in front of the entrances, the main entrances to Meyer. And lack of control over pet waste.
Yeah.
Potential.
So, um, the, the potential conflict, we could say, yeah, the conflict between animal waste and, um, and food.
Service.
Food sales. And the waste station being far away, dogs in proximity to, uh, both main entrances. And there was one more. I think those cover it. Anything, any, any friendly amendments?
Give us a second. I'm, I'm in support, Commissioner Hyde.
I think we, yeah, we had a human support.
Oh, sorry, Jeff.
That's all right.
I said we need a second.
Oh, you need a second. I thought you said.
Go ahead, take it.
Okay, so, um, Hyde and Riser, okay. Um, is there?
No, no, I do have a question for Commissioner Chang. Did you want to add anything in? We'd like the trustees to hear about.
Yes, I would like an, an additional signage and kind of a, a baggy type of station located as close as possible to the entrance.
Okay, so you could say a lack of station close, waste station close to the entrance.
So you know that this will go, I'm presuming in the vote, but should this go through as we're saying? And, and then it will go to the trustees where you will be presenting again. And if you have additional information at that time that addresses these concerns.
Is that a, uh, acceptable friendly amendment?
Yeah, they have, they have a waste station most of the entrance.
Okay, all right, fine. Then, any further discussion? Right, a roll call vote, please, Commissioner Chang.
Commissioner Hyde.
So this is a vote to deny.
That vote to deny, yes.
Commissioner who? Human?
Yes.
Commissioner Riser.
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner Sharman?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, no. And Commissioner Culberson?
Yes.
Okay, it is denied.
Right, well, thank you, and we'll go on to the.
No, it's, apologies, that's how it goes. That's what we do. Thanks again.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Did, did I need to sign here? I didn't see.
Yeah, you should. Uh, you don't have to, you don't have to sign in because it wasn't part of a public hearing.
Okay, I just didn't see it, that's all. Thanks again.
Thank you. That's correct. All right, um, then moving on to, um, discussion of the environmental sustainability, uh, climate action plan. And, um, one of the things, um, I, I was talking with folks that we should probably, um, part of this would be, uh, if we think we wanna schedule a public hearing, um, for the plan. And if we do that, we have kind of a stacked, um,
Agenda.
Agenda for, the earliest would be the, is it the fourteenth, I think?
Well, fourteenth, so the next two meetings, you already have two public hearings each.
Mm-hmm.
Um, next time, you have two conditional uses and the following time you have two rezonings.
Yeah.
Um, and it's been our policy not to take more than two at a time.
So the question is, what's the question?
Setting up a public.
Public hearing.
So there.
And it looks like it would be the twenty-eighth of August.
August twenty eighth is the first available.
I think we need to hear from the public before we say we've got a package.
Oh, yeah.
To go to the trustees. Yeah, and especially on neutrality and electricity and solar and gas and, of course, yeah, this is, yeah.
We didn't say anything about banning gas.
Do you?
I didn't say we said anything about banning gas.
Do we need to have the, a public hearing when it goes to the trustees as well? Or is this something that we can just have one public hearing and, um, notify the other groups?
I don't know that we should tell the trustees whether to have or don't have a public hearing. If they wanna have one, I think they can do so.
No, I wondered if we were required, if, if we thought it was.
Yeah, what, I think this is one of those cases where it's.
Up to us.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's kinda, there isn't anything black and white about it, but I think it's good process, definitely, to do a public hearing.
It needs to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think it's better for the board to have something that's been kind of vetted by the public with the input, the comments, the changes that, you know, could, it could be improved, you know? So hea- hearing what the residents have to say about something at the earliest outset is, I think, a good idea. If we get to hear from them twice, that's fine too.
So August twenty eighth.
August twenty eighth. And then, um, what, and I'm hoping that also gives folks here adequate time to review it and, you know, highlight it. I found a couple of, of, of items that I had, I didn't see prior to it, so, um, and, and the intent, um.
It's a lot of reading.
Yeah, and it's kind of thick.
It's a lot of reading.
Um, it's, it's dense. I had the, the, my editing person go, I don't know if I'm gonna make it through this. But anyway, um, yeah, so I think what we need to do is just maybe what we could do is look at one section each time and, and, uh, kind of, or a couple, we'd have to do a couple sections each, each meeting and get, there was specific feedback from, from trustees.
So could there be like a presentation and a public hearing on August twenty eighth? Could there be a presentation then hearing or, or it's just gonna be a hearing?
It's, it's hard, I mean.
It's, it's a hell of, it's such a, right.
I mean, the key pieces to it are really the action steps. And, and we, you know, we kind of, I kind of, the last meeting, I kind of went through each of those and highlighted a few of those, those action steps. But those are really, that's the meat of it. There's the vision piece and sort of, uh, so it's organized around, here's a vision. Okay, do you find anything wrong with the vision that's there? Um, this, this is sort of the current state of where we're at with this, this topic, this focus area. And then the really meat of it are those, the action plans. And they're really, many of them are, you know, around educating, around, um, you know, looking at our operations, around, um, that reviewing our ordinances um, under the, a sustainability lens, looking at flooding, um, proposing a, um, you know, looking at a resilient center, uh, looking at promoting solar, um, and, and those types of things. So I guess it, you know, probably focusing one on the vision, is there anything in the vision that doesn't, doesn't align with the, what we see? And then really looking at those, those action steps would be the critical pieces of it.
And we would like the public to have until August twenty eighth also to be reviewing and coming up with questions for us.
Right, because there was a draft out in April and then a new draft in June that up, that took in feedback that we've forgotten. And then, so this would give us, um, another month, basically, well, two months of, of people being able to look at it.
So somehow we need to get the word out early and often for the August twenty eighth.
And it was, we did get an article in Sun Times about it, so that was helpful.
Yeah, are there boards or commissions that should be asked to weigh in that might impact that?
We have asked all of them. And actually, the, um, the, the in, summer interns are, um, doing, they had the, the, a little, this, you know, presentation with the trustees. They're also, we're going to PPP. I talked briefly with the DDA so that they know about it. Also know about our Jackson Road work. Um, so kind of going to all of the meetings and asking them for specific feedback. The, the most specific feedback we've gotten has been from the, uh, Heritage for Watership Council. Um, and I have reached out to, it's been shared with SEMCOG, it's been, um, shared with, um, all of the committees, um, so it's.
Really, what's, what's.
And WORMA. Um, I have to, I have to get back with WORMA to have them specifically. Yeah. And, um, I think that was the only other suggestion I have to, I wanna, we did send it out, but I haven't followed up with them.
Okay, and I'm, I'm not sure if Jeff, um, yeah, certainly Jeff and Charlie have been talking. I, I would wonder, did we, we reached, you reached out to the trustees and to other departments uh, when the interviews were taking place, but we have a new name.
Yeah, we met, was.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So I think everyone knows that it's out there and then we're trying to also do another round of, yeah, it's, and now we can say, we're gonna have a public hearing on this date. You know, we want feedback, um, you know, more specific feedback ahead of that. So I think that would be helpful. And I think maybe the committee can, maybe there might be some brainstorming of some folks that we want. And we do have the emails for the HOAs and so forth, so we could, um, do a, a little output, hey, it's out there.
Do we still have the, um, students?
Yeah, we have two for summer. Yeah, both Zoe and, so I think that might be a good idea to, um, just do one last outreach to the folks that we.
What do we call them? Not a public hearing, is it a public hearing?
It would be a public hearing. It would be, uh, so it would be, it, it's the type that is posted in the Sun Times. There isn't a, an individual, like notification that goes out to property owners. Yeah. All right, then we'll go ahead and schedule that. Thanks for helping with the word. All right. All right, so I do suggest that you go, you know, as you're reviewing it, take one section and just, you know, go.
One bite at a time.
Yeah, one bite at a time, yeah.
And is there a succinct summarization of the action items?
You know what?
The introduction.
Uh, you know, I could do that. There's.
That's where the rubber meets the road. Okay, what does this mean? Be resolved that Sciop Township this or be, you know.
Okay, a summary of the action items. See if we can do that, so there's a.
Like an executive summary or something.
Okay, I think that's good. In a way, that is, yeah, of, of sort of the near term. Yeah, but I could probably look at that and maybe sharpen it up a bit.
Page eighteen.
Yeah.
That's what I have right now.
Sharpen the actions so it's easier to digest.
Eighteen, nineteen, right.
Yeah, I can come there now, but.
But a little bit, okay, I'll, we'll work on that. Cause there may be a way to put them in one chart that you can kind of, actions at a glance kind of thing, which would be helpful. And then if you see something that you're not quite sure of, you can go deeper. That might be a, a good way to do it. Okay.
I think of the, the whole, the whole, the whole, the whole report is like the whereas. Where's the be resolved? Therefore, what should we do based on all this stuff? What should, what should the board do or what should Sciop Township do, you know?
And it, each of the action items have basically a specific goal, so those can be drawn out and then.
How do we, and how do we copy cycle? Or the Sciop Township.
There's a huge area of it.
No, no, I meant that Sciop Township adopt policies, ordinances, resolutions to, will result in a ten percent or this or whatever.
Some of it does fit into that category, but some of it is more like a master plan where these are goals that you put in that you keep in mind as you do other things.
Okay.
Right.
Not am. I'm just saying, I want a document that the board can refer. Not am, I'm just saying, I want a document that the board can refer back to, like, hey, what actions should we take tonight, or what actions to take in the future that comports with this plan, that effectuates this plan.
Well, I also think there's another piece to it, and that is, I think there need, there's, and this is some discussion about um, how you really implement this plan, and part of the, the part of the proposal in there is to have a, it it's basically an extension of the management team that meets quarterly specifically for looking at progress of this plan, so that, but it would include land preservation, PPP, planning commission, DDA, and and so forth, and saying, what are we gonna take on, because there's like a, you know, a clean purchasing policy. But multiple elements, the planning commission can take on the ordinance review, which we're doing right now, basically, but there are other components, and then there's the whole community education piece, how do we make our, how do we make connections with residents, um, that are really critical to meet, meet this as well? And how do we get the resources that are created by the city of Ann Arbor and Washtenaw County, um, also out there? And one of the things that the task force is planning is that open house, tagging on with the open house, the fire open house, so it's building on that, where a lot of people come, um, to, and make it almost like an annual event, where you can get information on um, multiple activities, and it's family friendly, that kind of, so that's, but there are limited resources, so it's really being implemented, one within operations, township operations, so the trustees, it's it's a big deal, because when we go and replace the HVAC systems, you know, is it all electric, is it, you know, um, partial, partial gas, you know, are we, uh, we had, uh, put together a plan for electrification of fleets? How does that happen? Um, you know, so there, there are quite a few, um, kind of trustee decision making pieces that have to do with how we spend our money. And those are the, I think those are the big ones, that's public engagement and how we promote that, and then it's township operations and how we implement it within our own operations, and then the third piece are the ordinances as far as zoning and, um, then preservation, the parks, that type of thing, so those are kind of the three realms.
Need to make a motion?
No, I think we can, I I don't. We can schedule the the public hearing, yeah.
August twenty eighth at seven P M.
At that meeting, we're gonna, yeah.
Yes.
Where do we talk about the, um, what do you call it, management?
Um, it's in the front or, it's it's in the very big, uh, like, a third of the way.
Management.
Yeah, yeah, and it's the the diagram that shows the, um, it's in the implementation at the beginning, after. That's really the key thing, and and that has to be a part of management, and we had an initial discussion with Joyce about that, but obviously, she's taking on a lot of things all at once. And that may not be the best way to do it, but that's a, at least using our existing resources and existing structure to to help do it. And in developing some, um, kind of recruiting some people, both internally and then in the neigh- in neighborhoods and so forth, that are passionate about it. People up with resources.
You know, I found it, uh, difficult sometimes is referring to page number, because in the document, it's sixteen and seventeen.
Yeah, cause there's some blank pages.
Well, it's on page nine of the document, because it's, there's one page too wide on the.
Yeah, oh, yeah, too wide on the media, yeah. Uh, I wonder if there's a different way I can put it together, hmm, okay, page numbers.
Every time I hear Rob Pattinson talk about this ninety page document or whatever, it's only forty in my head, whatever.
All right, um, I do wanna spend some, if if that's okay with folks, um, I wanna spend some time in the Jackson Road zoning, and it's linked kind of with the city, um, so before we get to a point where we're, um, not as sharp, um, I did, for background, I did find the, um, the original kind of study that was the.
Uh, that's a good one.
Yeah, so just to get, I mean, it's basically how the ordinance was developed and, um, so it's a little bit of history.
You seen, like, scanned that?
Yeah, I scanned it and it got uploaded, so it's in the, in the. Yeah, so that was after I went to the DDA meeting today, so that got scanned and then put up, okay. So we have Laura here, and, um, so I thought it would be good, um, you put together that memo, and you know, really, maybe you can, um, since you're here, you know, talk a little bit about, um, I I do think we need to kind of establish some goals and, sort of, how did Pittsfield do it and, um, looking at, you've sort of seen it side by side, and what are some of the core differences in the difference between the overlay and the zoning and the uses and.
Okay, so I think, so I I really think there's the two main differences of Jackson Road overlay and the form-based district that Pittsfield has done. Is one, the overlay ha- is an overlay of many different zoning categories, right? So you have in the Jackson Road overlay, C two, C one, C two, C three, C four, industrial, office service, maybe even multi-examining, not a lot, um, all of those uses are all encompassed with an overlay of the Jackson Road quarter, which is really what what we've talked about, right, the the, um, design of buildings, the location, placement of buildings, those types of things. Whereas the form-based district is its own zoning category, its own district, it's not an overlay, it is, it is the uses, it is um, placement of buildings, et cetera, and what I provided in the memo is just kind of a snippet of what, um, the form-based district is. Form-based district has, um, each individual property is called a site, has a site type, and it's based on the size of the site, so the smaller the site, site type A, specific uses are allowed in that, in this site, because of the size of the parcel. Site type D, that's a larger site, maybe like a Meyer site, or, um, somewhere where it's gonna be developed into many, potentially many uses, um, many buildings, et cetera, and then you have building, um, types, um, and placement can vary depending on the building type, is it a single tenant building? Is it a multi-tenant building? Is there, is there a residential component on the second floor, or is there, um, a residential component as part of a larger overall development? So that's, that's the biggest difference, is it's overlay, which you're still dealing with the underlying zoning category, or of its own zoning, in Pittsfield, they have several form-based districts, so the Washtenaw form-based district is much different than the Ann Arbor-Saline Road form-based district, the, you know, there, there are the building types, the site types, that's the same, but maybe the use categories are a little different, or, um, maybe there's just more larger sites in one than the other.
Can you vary the use within a district?
You can, but the uses are generally like I provided in the, um, memo, they aren't specific, right? You're talking about, they're called use groups, and so you have residential uses, residential lodging uses, office institutional, so so maybe not every single use, like the, like we had tonight with the doggy daycare, maybe that's not a specific use like that, it's not gonna be in this list, but you're looking for the most similar use that would, that would go along with with that particular use, so, um, those are, that's, that's the main difference, when you're looking just at the design criteria, a lot of the Jackson Road is really this very similar to the form-based district, you want buildings placed close to the street, you limit the amount of parking that you have in the front yard, you you encourage parking on the side and the rear of buildings, you have pedestrian amenities, um, you provide your sidewalks and benches and bicycle, uh, parking, those types of things, um, same thing with landscaping, I I don't, so I, so what I guess I'm getting at is Jackson Road isn't that far off from what Pittsfield does, um, I think they, you just kind of, they kind of just looked at it in a little bit different way, and I don't think that, um, CYO can't get there just by maybe tweaking the the Jackson Road overlay or relooking at it. I think one, um, aspect that the Jackson Road lacks is pedestrian amenities, um, when we were dealing with Bellmark Plains, when they were looking at their expansion, I don't know who was here, if you remember, they were going to have, um, bocce ball courts, do you remember this, Chris, in the front?
Yes.
Um, this is kind of a long-going thing, so before, in Tesla, they were going to, um, span, have a restaurant, a larger restaurant in there, bocce ball courts, sand volleyball, and I think they had to get a variance in order to have pedestrian stuff close to Jackson Road, which we shouldn't be allowing that, you know, that's something that we should be looking at amending ordinance to allow, so things like that, I think definitely there amenity type things and, um, even, um, building placement things we should look at, uh, but I think for the most part, you're you're very, you're very close to what the form-based district offers. Pittsfield does allow greater height, um, and that's another conversation, building height, um, but they do, they do allow for.
Why is that another con- why is that another conversation?
Well, I I just think it's a conversation that we need, that that this group needs to think about, um, is whether. Is whether four stories or three stories.
You're talking, obviously, you're talking on Jackson Road where we have infrastructure, sewer and water.
Only along Jackson Road.
Where we could support the density if if the market.
Only on, along the Jackson Road quarter, yes.
Actually, yeah, and even in the, specifically the sewer district, it's just the sewer district, a sewer district, yeah.
And there are also cases, um, in Pittsfield where they have, we've allowed a two-story building along the front, and we have allowed greater story buildings behind, right, um, because of the distance behind the structure from the road, um, can allow variation and and just, um, not let, you know, not providing a level type development, but they do in in most, in a lot of cases, allow for up to four stories, and in some, in some form-based districts, they require at least two stories, so.
Do they get many variance requests or requests for additional uses that?
No, um, really, the general use, um, I don't, I mean, I've been working in Pittsfield for seven years, and I don't think we've ever, I mean, there are uses we definitely don't want in certain locations, um, particularly vehicle-oriented uses, drive-throughs, um, gas stations, I know in car washes, um, they have been, uh, requested in a form-based district and they, they've said, it doesn't even get to the planning commission, it's like, no, this isn't gonna work. I mean, you can try, but it's not gonna work here, um, but in most cases, no, there have been, well, one, you can't give use variances, but no, there hasn't been, um, requests for uses that wouldn't work necessarily.
When you say you can't give you use variances, is that a part of the, uh, form-based zoning?
No, a township cannot give you variances.
A township cannot give you variances.
In form, you say they cannot, or they will?
Township cannot, they cannot legally get, give a use variance, a township cannot give you variance.
Doesn't the township have a P U Ds?
P U D is a rezoning of property, it's not a variance.
Well, that's my point, is they just rezonate, wink, wink, it's not a use variance, it's a rezoning to a P U D.
But it still has to meet the, still has to meet the master plan and all of those things, yes.
Can Jackson Road quarter have different, uh, districts along it, so that?
It does, it currently does.
I know, but is it form-based zoning?
No, if it were form-based, well, you could, yeah.
Can you make, can you have different zoning?
Well, like Pittsfield did, they have different clusters of uses.
So like if, in the east side, we wanted to have, that's where we wanna have our auto sales, and we don't wanna have it in the central or west side, and we could have different, we could have three different districts or four or whatever, we, we could do that. And then, in that way, we wouldn't have to see westward expansion as some people.
Of car dealerships or, right, not?
Or whatever.
Is so, I think it would be helpful if we can kind of talk, think through and talk through what the objectives would be, okay, what's the the vision and how is it different from what's kind of evolving at this point? And I think that, you know, it's, it's, yeah, and it has, and I think it has to do with, um, you know, we allow, you know, I think some of the things are, how close should things be to the right of way? You know, right now, we have more distance, and can you have more distance if you have pedestrian-oriented things as opposed to parking? You know, I'm I'm just trying to think through, and then do we want a minimum, I mean, it would be really different if CYO said, okay, we want a two-story minimum and a four-story maximum or something like that on Jackson Road, because so much of what gets built on Jackson Road is, you know, that single story, um.
How tall was that one brewer, that brew house, I don't know where it is, like a pub place, uh, on Jackson Road, kind of sandwiched between, I feel like it's a gas station and, uh.
The south side?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's on the south side of Jackson Road.
Holmes Brewery?
No, there's another one, Session Rooms.
That's just one. That's a single story.
Yeah, but that was an old, that was an old garage, that was like.
Right, that was renovated, yeah.
Yeah, quite a few uses over there.
Well, I, every time I pass that on my bike, I, I wish there was more of that, honestly, because that's right up on the road, and it feels much more.
It's a road brand.
So, I, you know, I, I guess what I was trying to say is that I don't know that I'm, I would be concerned about saying it needs to be two stories, you know, I think I'd be comfortable with a, with a one story, as long as we were able to get on closer to the road and, or pedestrian-friendly, I think we also should probably put some stuff about adding trees on, along the sidewalk.
Is the two-story because there's retail on the first or mixed use on the first, and there's ordinarily often residential on the second? What percent of the second stories is for residential?
Oh, there are several pending projects that have retail, I don't know if there are any built.
How about, how about residential?
Residential?
Yeah, how about, i- isn't it, isn't the model often residential or office or something on the first floor?
On the second, on, yes.
On the first floor, and the second floor is housing.
Yes.
Which is like the CYO, what is that small complex?
So, so that's, that's the incentive to have a second, two-story minimum, uh, is that you have a residential up there. They have to put something up there, and it usually comes to residential, it depends, do do we need residential in CYO? And do we want residential on Jackson Road in CYO? That would be the reason to require two stories.
Right, understood, and, you know, I think, I would imagine that the market says, yes, we need more residential, um, and I'm just going out on a limb from what I've seen, I don't think that the market's asking for any more four hundred thousand dollar single-family homes, seeing how they're not selling very well near me, but I think that there's probably a lot more demand for smaller, uh, apartment style here, just guessing.
You mean four hundred thousand dollars because that's too low, or what do you mean?
I mean, I don't know why they're not selling, it doesn't appear to be selling, though, they're like right in my backyard.
You remember the, you remember the prices of, at CYO View of the, the, the ones we approved a couple of weeks ago?
Were they four hundred thousand?
No, seven, eight hundred.
Seven hundred, eh, seven, eight hundred, I mean, I, it's, yeah, yeah.
Seven hundred, eh, eh, seven, eight hundred, I mean, I, it's, eh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, then maybe they're too expensive.
And what'll be interesting will be what the market uptake is of Woodview Commons. Because that one has, I mean, that has the, you know, the retail and it has the apartments, it has, it has a whole variety of, yeah, of housing types in it and just really seeing what the, you know, how the market reacts to that. But I, I think I, I get what you're saying about, I think right now, we allow two bags of parking in front. And if we can eliminate, change that, then, and, and then, I guess the question is, maybe there are some areas where you want two-story, but, you know, we have enough land that I think you could even put the residential further. It, it, you know, you, you wouldn't necessarily have to have, you know, the residential right on Jackson Road. You have enough depth, but you could do higher, um, do multi-story.
What, what happens with the existing, when you rezone to the form-based, you accept what's already built? And I would assume so.
Yeah, so you have the non-conforming, so the question becomes then.
What happens when they wanna redevelop that, do they have to knock it down and rebuild?
So, if they want to expand, they would have to meet the current standards or they have those zoning board appeals in order to allow for expansion of a non-conforming building.
So you'd have to expand some of those buildings forward and get, and move the parking to the side or to the back?
No, I'm not, you know, I, I'm not a proponent of changing to a form-based model. I think you can work within the Jackson Road, current Jackson Road overlay to make some modifications, to make it, it's already pretty similar to what a form-based district is.
In terms of the form.
In terms of the form. But that's, but that, but that's what a form-based district really is based on, is it's.
The form.
The form, and the uses are kind of secondary to the mass and the form and the placement. So, um, I think, my opinion, we could talk about how to maybe modify the underlying zoning a little better, maybe, maybe there's usage, you know, maybe we look at the underlying zoning categories and make some modifications based on what type of uses we think we wanna see in the quarter and what categories are most compatible with those, um, of our current zoning. Um, and then make sure those are represented in the, in the, um, overlay district.
Yeah, 'cause I think some of the issues that we've had have been, you know, the, the, the storage piece, you know, the less active. But, you know, you think about where you might have the ice cream production. We had, also had someone coming in wanting to do, you know, small-scale meathouse, um, you know, slaughter.
Slaughterhouse parlor.
Yeah, only, you know, yeah, a very, um, you know, for mostly the CSAs, um, so that they could sell at a retail as opposed to a member kind of piece. Um, so there are some interesting, you know, that if you just got rid of the industrial altogether, that you, you know, you, you kind of lose out on some of that stuff, that really, um, I think is an interesting mix with the, the rural, you know, because we have the rural piece, we have farms, we have, um, yeah, close CSAs and so forth. So, you know, trying to make that work with, um.
Well, and, and the J-Rod already, already provides for it, it allows for a mixed-use development if you use a use that's in the underlying zoning district. And so, even if it's industrial, office is allowed in industrial. So if you, like, Hon, the Honey Creek Business Park's gonna come to you, you remember it, it was a conditional use. They had office uses, the hotel, was there a drive-through or something like that?
Just the one that's on, uh, Jackson and, and Baker?
Oh, Z, yeah, Jackson and Z.
Yeah, so they're gonna come back to you for a PUD, but because the, the mixed use, they needed a height variance and it didn't work out. But it's kind of, it's kind of that same thing, right? They, they could do a mixed use there because they have an underlying use. Um, so I think, I think the J-Rod already does a good job incorporating, okay, as long as you have one underlying use, we just need to make sure that, that the underlying use that we really want in, in certain areas is depicted in that, in that underlying zoning.
And so there are some issues around where do you put the I2 and, and where is this, in that, in the storage and the, um, and then the C4.
Yeah, I think C4, I2.
Some of those need to be really looked at carefully, so, yeah.
I was really looking at the opportunity here as a positive to set up where we wanted the, the uses to be located as much as we could. And the form-based zoning seemed like an opportunity to enact that without having to really go through the contortions on the existing zone.
I think, though, you might find that if, if you were to change to a form-based district, you're gonna have a lot of non-conforming parcels and that can be an issue too. You know, you're, 'cause not everyone can afford to completely start over when they want it. And, you know, we have a zoning board appeals, I mean, they do, they do a good job, I mean, they, they don't like giving variances. And so, um, I think that might, that might become an issue for some existing.
So, uh, going back to the question about non-conformity in Pittsfield, were there, whenever they were going with these, uh, form-based zonings, were there instances of non-conforming parcels? How were, how were they dealt with?
So, um, when, uh, let's say it's an existing building in a form-based district, does not meet the placement standards. They can, um, excuse me, they can change uses. If they want a conditional use or if they are making modifications to their site plan, we make them become as conforming as possible. We make them do something to become more conforming. For example, the TGA Fridays out on Lower Road, um, is in a form-based district and Culvers wants to go there. And really, drive-throughs are conditional use in all our form-based districts in Pittsfield Township. Um, so in order to allow the drive-throughs a conditional use, they have to do significant landscaping. They have to run a bead wall along Lower Road, provide that, um, street presence that the building can't provide, right? So there's already a parking lot there. They have to provide, um, there's a certain level of transparency that they have to provide on, on the front sides of the building. Um, they also are providing a significant patio in the front, um, as, as open space and user space. So there are, while they aren't totally conforming to the form-based, they are bringing that site into, into more significant compliance.
But it's still non-compliant.
It's still not compliant, but it's more compliant than sitting there as it is now, yep.
Does the, the, is it the current code, uh, ordinance, I guess, uh, allow for this type of working with the developer, right, in this case? Like, is it, is it specifically in the ordinance, does it need to be in the ordinance?
It is not in the ordinance.
Okay.
It is, it's just been the philosophy and the policy of the township.
And who's making these?
The planning commission.
Okay, and it isn't their discretion even if it's not conforming?
And the board trustees, okay.
No, the board trustees does not look at site plans in that township. They review, there's no uses and rezonations in Pittsfield, yes. Here, anything that you do is a recommendation to the township.
How does that work?
This is a suggestion from Mr.
Did you hear this, Mr. Riser? I mean, part of that goes to the piece about, um, you, you know, making it, the development so difficult and so many steps, you know, the article that, the New York Times article about, um, trying to streamline the process a little bit at the same time.
It doesn't have anything to do with charter township versus general law?
No, every township, um, has made their own rules as far as, um, how that works. Um, it's usually in the ordinance, it's written in the ordinance, um, how, how that, those processes work. And in Pittsfield, that's just, that's kind of a process. And then other communities, but in some cases, just like you, there are many that, language is strictly recommended by, and then the board will make all the decisions, so it just depends.
If you look in the city of Ann Arbor, they've re-zoned hundreds and hundreds of parcels recently to TC1. And I think that's what probably Jackson, that's the TC1 Transit Corridor. That's what Jackson is, it's how transit corridor, it's where the bus routes run.
Do we have a TC1?
You don't have a TC1 in TC1.
Transit corridor one, it's like Stadium is washed and out, or.
Right, they're all not conforming. Everyone of those sites have washed and out, Plymouth Road, Stadium, they're all not conforming. And that's fine, they're existing not conforming, we've rezoned them. So, but if they come in, they're going to have to become conforming, that may be an issue for them. But it's increased density, we're putting the buildings, it's gonna be taller, uh, residential as a component. Drive-throughs are all, I don't wanna say dead, but I haven't seen one approved yet under it. And I don't, I don't suspect we will give one, uh, under there, so. But that's, it, it sounds very similar to, to Jackson, to Jackson Corridor, it's, it's transit, foreign.
And similar to what Pittsfield's done around Ann Arbor, so, yeah, bringing buildings closer, putting multiple, mixed use on the first floor, residential on the second, park behind the building, pathways to interconnect residents, housing and, and businesses. So it's, it's kind of TC1-ish, if you ask me.
Yeah, that's it, exactly.
Yeah, and the, the TC1 is, uh, but you have, it's higher, right?
Yes, oh yeah, you're gonna get more density.
Yeah, and we do have, you know, the issue of the sewer piece that, you know, will have to.
We better start the conversation with Ann Arbor.
You mean the 1,200 flushes?
The 1,200 flushes.
Well, we established the order that that's supposed to be in, we're supposed to do the zoning first and then do the negotiation.
Right.
That was in the, in the last, in the last meeting. The way to, to deal with the REUs or whatever is to do the zoning first and then do the negotiation after.
As long as, yeah, a- as long as we don't end up with all of this non-conforming and you really can't do anything because you don't have the sewer and you, you can't get the density because you can't, you know, you get, you, you have to make sure that you at least have an interim, yeah, an interim kind of thing. At least a, an acknowledgement.
Yeah.
From the city that they'd be willing, if, if we're working on density, tra, uh, transit and those things, that they'd be agreeable to doing the sewer, because they're gonna have a lot more, as they densify, you're gonna have a lot more demand.
And the, the, tomorrow on the board is my, my report, uh, Goodrich PUD. And we talked about, you know, potentially having a dense housing situation there, we're, did we say five stories or whatever?
We went up to six.
Six, yeah, so, in, in assuming that the first floor is retail and there's five, I mean, assuming and the market for that, how, how many, how many REUs would that use?
Yeah. Big chunk, yeah.
Yeah, it might, yeah, it might use half of it, half, it could use a good third, it could probably use a third of it.
So if we want to go forward with changing the Jackson Road overlay, or at least portions of it, to this form-based zoning, um, what's the next step? I mean, like, I would imagine there needs to be some sort of, we gotta do some homework, um, and come back with something. What, what is the, what's the homework assignment, what's the, what's the thing that we come back with?
Do we need to have working sessions?
We also need to get a sense, and it's be my job, I suppose, tomorrow, it's like, hey, board, the, the, the planning commission's been kind of talking about Jackson Road, what do you want it to look like? What's the density gonna like, what's the buildings gonna look like? Are, do we want them pulled up against the, the sidewalks? Do we wanna have a couple of stories with mixed use on floor one, housing on floor two, you know? We, how do we, how do we integrate all that into the footprints where we have car, car dealerships? How do, how do we, where do we want this? Is this something that could, it's more likely to happen, um, around the, the Zeeb? You know, uh, towards, westward towards Zeeb, or is it something that can happen near Wagner? So, so, you know, or, or is it like the vision for Baker Road westward?
Because right now, you know, if you look at what we've, I mean, Baker Road is, you know, with what we've done, um, you've got, you know, Woodview Commons and, you, you know, so do we have, i- it, it, that's further out than, you know, coming in, but that's already creating some kind of density, what could happen? I mean, if the, you know, so do we, where do we have nodes where we think we can have that kind of density? Um, it, or parcels that could be developed into that density? And do you encourage it more on the, um, on the south side of Jackson? Because you don't have the 94 piece there. And, I mean, does the zoning, does it, you know, kind of the uses change a little bit, you know, on the south side versus, you know, what you do on the north side? And do you do, you know, on the north side, you could actually build taller up against the freeway? And you could, on the south side, you know, you might wanna, you know, start taller and go down as you go into more of a, the residential area. So what, what do those transitions look like? And, you know, I was thinking, um, and then, we're not gonna be able to have crosswalks every block on, on Jackson Road. So you, you know, if you're gonna build that, a pedestrian-friendly kind of piece where it doesn't make sense, 'cause you have to couple the bus, you know, the bus stops with the crosswalks. And you, you, people don't travel very far to do those. So you want to have those, whatever development nodes, also part of, you know, that pedestrian connectivity too.
Why can't we have crosswalks every block?
Every block?
Yeah.
I don't, well, number one.
The blocks are a mile apart, I mean, what, what is a block?
Well, that's what I was thinking, I was thinking like in a, in a city where you, yeah, yeah.
Block's about a.
Wagner's a block, Zeeb's a block, Baker's a block.
That's, I don't consider that a block.
That's a block, right?
Those are like mile roads, right? Yeah, but, but, but if it, if it's.
You'd be wondering what you think.
But if it's gonna work.
Ten thousand miles a block in my eye.
No, but my point is, we don't have blocks, 'cause there ain't much to go north of Jackson until you run into a freeway.
However, if you're gonna make the transit work, you know, if, if you, if you don't have a crosswalk near.
Right, then people aren't gonna be able to get to the bus.
The bus station, eh, the bus, you're gonna have people just jumping over.
I mean, I already, I see people crossing the median already, because we don't have proper crosswalks on Jackson in that area.
Right, and that's, then, yep.
When you see people doing things like that, that's not their fault, that's a poorly designed space.
I'm with you, Jeff, yep.
You're here.
That's where they put bridges in, you know, pedestrian.
That's expensive.
I'd hate to see that.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the things that I think we need to look at really carefully is where, 'cause you can, you, with the way that we've designed the boulevards, there are only certain places where you can really put the crosswalks and make them safe.
And, but one of the PUD benefits for Olympia was a crosswalk. In, in that area.
Potentially in the future, yeah.
Well, that's because it, it's the road commission too. But, but I'm just thinking, you know, what would your, I mean, how do you go about, like, making that, that plan where those might be? Because right now, you know, talking, one of the things, I had a conversation with Suzanne Flowers and she said, well, even the, the crosswalk on Park and the relationship to the bus stop isn't working. Because people just get off the bus and walk, you know, the closest park, I guess. And she's seeing people, you know, there's a crosswalk not very far away and people aren't using it. Um, they're just crossing Jackson Road. So how do you go about trying to figure out how to map out bus stops and crosswalks? And, I mean, I think that's a multi ques, that's a multi-answer question. I mean, and you have to work with other entities in order to collectively come. Right, it's a road commission. It's the road commission, but it's also the transit authority, I mean, there's a lot of working parks and so. And the DDA. And the DDA, but, and developers, because the township doesn't wanna pay for, for those things. So you also have to think about when developments come, where are the, you know, where does it make sense and where, how can they help provide some of that, right? Where are their people going and how are they gonna connect them to where they need to go? So.
So, to, to, to build upon what Commissioner, um, him and Commissioner Riser was saying, I think the first thing, first things first, we need to develop some kind. I think the first thing, first things first, we need to develop some kind of vision and some kind of uh. Some kind of vision around the zoning as to what we can allow, what we want to allow, what we don't want to allow. Is that kind of, I'm thinking right here, before anything else comes to the picture, and then start defining what those things we want. Start defining those things that we don't want. Like, for example, let's hypothetically, I'm not saying this is the right answer, but yeah, like manufacturing, we don't want to allow, like like manufacturing. Because you don't necessarily believe that maybe in the right interest of the Jackson corridor. So again, without going going into the in, deeper into that, I mean, is that the right place to start? For us to kind of define, or is there some other starting point for this discussion? In other words, what exactly, the very, the very basics, what exactly do we want? What's our vision for this?
Well, I think you can start with the Jackson Road overlay already. I mean, I think, I mean, I did a comparison of Jackson Road overlay, corridor corridor and the form-based district. And they're very sim, they are very similar when you look at them.
Sorry, which district?
So, I'm sorry?
You you didn't compare them on what?
No, the Jackson Road overlay and the Pittsfield Township form-based district.
Okay.
Sorry, I, we've already, we've already seen that they're very similar.
I see.
So I think, I think the first thing you might wanna think about doing is looking at the Jackson Road or overlay ordinance. And, you know, looking through it and saying, okay, well, we allow building, you know, we allow buildings to be X um feet away from Jackson Road. Should they be closer? What is the, what is the form-based district allow? They allow thirty feet, we say they have to be seventy-five feet, or or we have a maximum, not a minimum, for example. So I think there, those are things, we we already have a base to start with. I think you just need to start thinking about, okay, well, if we require buildings to be seventy-five feet, what does that look like? And why couldn't we do it thirty feet? What does that mean? Or why do, uh, we allow two bays of parking, but one, when, you know, we just say they, they're allowed to have two. They can have one, and that brings the building that much closer also. So I think there, we already have something to work from, I don't think we need to recreate, start from scratch. Definitely can improve, definitely um can be modified, but I don't necessarily think we need to start from zero.
And I think there are some, I mean, what's, there are some, you talk about manufacturing. And I think there are some places in SIO where, you know, it exists and it still could happen. And, you know, I wouldn't want to not allow Lake Slate to have its, you know, facilities. And, you know, so, and and some of the other things that, you know, happen in SIO too. Yeah, so, so but maybe there are, you know, maybe you build a really strong, there's, there's a stretch of Jackson Road where you really build that strong. Or sections of Jackson Road that you really build those strong, um higher densities. This is where we want to have the mixed use, commercial use. And there can be, uh, you know, um, some distance since we have. I don't know, you know, do you, do you just really attack a certain segment of it?
Wait, I don't know, how would you look, or just do the transit corner through the whole thing, or I don't know which it's.
I I kinda like where Laura's going, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel here. You know, I think the debate is, instead of seventy-five feet that we have a minimum, is, okay, let's take it the max of twenty feet or something. It's just a matter, do you wanna make it thirty feet, twenty feet? Do we wanna follow up Pittsfield? You know, if that's what you want, what is Pittsfield, ten feet? I gotta look at the chart.
I think it's ten feet.
And what about second floors? What about second floor? What about mixed use? If it's when they come, what's that?
We already have that.
Yeah, oh, a car wash, you can wash your car and your bike?
Yeah.
No, but you, I mean, that's, that's not that mixed a storage, you can store your stuff and your wife's stuff? I mean, we have a lot of single-use things going up on Jackson Road. That's my point, should we require mixed use to get more different things there, different, I don't wanna say different people there, but a mix of people there. A mix of uses and and, you know.
I I think the form is probably the right, the, I do think that's the right way for us to address a lot of these issues is. You wouldn't have, you wouldn't be able to do a car wash in a form, I would think that we would want for Jackson Road overlay district. Um and I hear you on the the second story thing, I don't know what you did there. Um I just would hate to prevent development, in the kind of development we would want, just because they.
They're not conforming.
It was too expensive to do a second story or whatever, they had no need for or no demand, that that was my only concern there.
Yeah, and I would actually, you know, maybe the option, if you can't, if it's an existing building, you just can't, you, you need to do some sort of outdoor. Pedestrian-friendly, you you can, you either build your building out there, or you, or you do some sort of landscaping or something like that. And but no, you're not gonna, you, you've gotta get rid of parking that's in the front.
Yeah. And it's also a good idea, we we really do need to get all these business owners on board also. Leave them behind, they're gonna wanna have a stake in this, so it's good that they start getting their input now.
Yeah, I mean, it really affects people's, the existing property owners, you know, when you make a shift like this. So how do you, and and maybe, you know, this, the idea of of looking at just some of the basics and allowing for that transition. So it isn't a real, it isn't difficult, because, you know, not to have something like a session, you know, i- is it downside?
Well, in the session room, I mean, if you remember, it's a nonconforming building on nonconforming lots, I believe. And so they were able to adapt to this, an existing building on an existing lot that were nonconforming. And it's been highly successful, and they continue to expand, so. We've been, the township's always been very supportive, yeah.
So, next steps, um if you'll talk a little bit to the trustees.
Yeah, no, it's like, what do we, what, what's, what's our vision for Jackson Road, folks? What do we wanna, what, you know, imagine in five years, ten years from now, what's, what's it gonna look like?
And I think we have, I think we need to talk about increased density, increased height, pedestrian amenities. Bringing buildings closer to the road or having some sort of activity, visible activity, um.
What's the advantage of that? Just devil's advocate, whoa, 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 why do you want buildings next to a road that's sixty miles an hour? Some people are gonna be walking there.
Because you don't have to walk so far to get into the building. It's a, if you're coming from the sidewalk and you've gotta cross, you know, six rows of parking, that's a, that's quite a distance, I would say.
Like walking the Meyer.
Yeah, that's not a very pedestrian way to enter a building, as opposed to like the session room, it's right down the sidewalk, you can just walk right in.
Would you really look for side of a building instead of all this, see a parking lot?
No, I just, 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 just ask it, no, push it back.
You gotta stability.
Yeah, aesthetics.
Yeah, okay.
So we need to.
Aesthetics and functionality with respect to locomotion fast.
Yeah, but I think there's a, there, there's, there also has to be the recognition that there's a lot of infrastructure work. That's gonna have to happen to make that successful, with with the pedestrian piece and the, um, and it, I don't have in my mind. You know, we have right now a pretty narrow sidewalk along Jackson Road. And somehow putting bikes in the roadway is a little dicey, you know, um. So what does that mean for the right-of-way? You know, it's it's almost like there's a back row piece, but there's a, that. Where do, where do the bikes go? Where do, how do we have a multimodal Jackson Road? And I feel like we need to look at that at the same time we're looking at what we're doing with the buildings. And, you know, you talk about trees, well, the road commission fights putting trees in the right-of-way. So where's the right-of-way? What kind of pathway do we have? What does that mean for the buildings? And maybe, you know, if we're gonna get fought on the right-of-way, maybe we have to move things in. So you you end up with, you know, building trees, pathway, trees, right-of-way or something like that.
Well, on that topic, this is, this is kind of a thing in Strong Towns Circle that I am subscribed to. Um that whole not putting trees in the, in the right-of-way is all about um increasing speed on the roads. By having objects close to the road like that, uh it makes drivers more cautious and drive slower. Uh and so I would say that uh the road commission is wrong, and that we do need trees up next to the road. Um that will slow drivers down, um.
Just slow.
Right, we don't need a hi, we don't need a highway on Jackson Road, we got ninety-four right there.
Right, I would just add that in a lot of cases, the right-of-way also, it not only doesn't comfort the sidewalk, but it also, there are underground utilities.
Which you can't plan on.
Which you can't plan over top either, so I, you know, that's not the case completely all the way down, um, Jackson Road.
Especially in the bowl of earth.
But I think in a lot of cases, that's part, that's part of it. Um and I think Jackson Road runway varies too, depending on, you know, the location. So that's definitely something we should think about. And know, um at least the maximum width of the right-of-way when you're talking about building placement. Because even if you say we want the building at a ten-foot um built-to line from the right-of-way, that could, that could vary depending on what property you're talking about.
So what would be a good way to get a handle on that? I'm just.
On whether we can plant trees there?
Just what the.
Where the right-of-way is.
We can talk to O H M and um.
Where the build line could be.
Right, if we want it, I mean, the goal would be bring the build line as close as we can. But we also want multimodal, you know, make it a multimodal street. What does that mean? And how do we, I mean, how will we engage the road commission?
Well, O H M might have some of that information, okay.
I have a basic question, you mentioned the early part of the discussion, Pittsfield Township. Are you referring to the construction on Ann Arbor Saline Road?
No.
Yes, well.
Well, that's part of it. Well, it's part of it, but um they have several form-based districts, what we're talking about. Ann Arbor Saline Road, Washnam Avenue, Carpenter Road, um Michigan Avenue.
Oak Valley.
Oak Valley's kinda where, and that's where, and we call that Ann Arbor Saline Road, yeah, but Oak Valley is part of that.
Oak Valley, okay, yeah. Okay, I was only visualizing Oak Valley and Ann Arbor Saline Road near the Texas.
Yeah, so Ann Arbor Saline, Oak Valley, they're, they're a separate form-based district, but there's also Washnam, Carpenter.
So on Ann Arbor Saline Road, the construction is very close to the road.
The newer one.
The newer one, so on the right, if it's coming from the highway, on the right-hand side.
Yes, yes. Yes.
They're very close, very, very.
Yes. Those are forming.
Is that what we are thinking?
Yep.
So, so what have they done on Washnam between Gulfside and Carpenter? Cuz that was like, cuz that's what, that's what, Washington, Pittsfield only has some of Washington on it. They don't have it, they don't have it west of Carpenter, they have it west of Gulfside and east of Carpenter. The the Glenco Hills, they have the old Kroger that's now.
There's not, there's no new, there are no new developments.
I I don't see anything, they have the old Vic Tanny, I don't see a whole lot of cool-looking stuff like they have on uh Ann Arbor Saline Road there.
Nope, there's not, but there have been some, um, not a lot of interest along Washnam yet. For for redevelopment in that area.
That's cuz you got Ann Arbor Saline and those are both the five.
Okay.
Um.
Cuz just rezoning it ain't gonna, it's not a magic wand, or, you know.
Right. Nope, nope, and the, the.
That looks pretty, I don't wanna say stagnant, but I'll say it looks the same now as it did four years ago, ten years ago.
It does, yep. But it is, it was zone form-based at the same time.
Okay.
That, um.
So the market was different.
Michigan Avenue was, Ann Arbor Saline was.
And and it picked up there for whatever reason.
Yeah. Okay. But any new development, yes, of course, we have.
Okay, so, so we need to get some data around. How, looking at, I think we, the goal would be to bring the buildings as close as we possibly can. So how do we get the data to take an informed decision about that?
I heard that.
Well, I think we need to talk about clear points, other damage.
Okay, remind me of that.
Kind of work.
Decide how big the sidewalks should be there too.
Right, and how do we accommodate a multimodal, what's a multimodal plan for Jackson Road?
Right, well, in my head, I see wide sidewalks that accommodate pedestrians and bicycles. There's a portion of it where I guess where the newer car dealerships are, I don't know, it gets, it gets a lot wider than it does in other parts. And that's almost wide enough for bicyclists and pedestrians.
Yeah, and that's like eight feet though, isn't it?
Um, I don't know, it's, it's pretty wide.
For bike and pedestrian, I mean, it's not eight feet there, but it should be ten.
Ten for a bike and pedestrian.
So again, that, and and our.
Bicycles would be on the sidewalk?
Yeah, so you'd have a ten-foot multi.
Okay.
Either that or we have to build a same bike lane that's barricaded on Jackson, yeah, you can.
The same on Jackson. Yeah, that would be more economical.
No, if you got a barricade, are you kidding? You're gonna put barriers.
I think you'll see a lot more resistance.
You take a lane of travel out, you put a dedicated bike lane, bidirectional, with a, with barriers, instants and things like that. It's quite expensive.
More expensive than building a separate lane on the sidewalk and extending the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's just a sidewalk.
Yeah, sidewalk is you're widening the sidewalk.
I know, it's true.
Yeah, you don't have the same.
Here, here, you're, you're taking a lane of travel out.
That is true.
And and you're putting a bidirectional lane or something with a, with a separation lane or. You're not, are you, you're talking about a dedicated bike lane, or like, I gotta tell you the truth. Or you just mean a bike lane painted on the right?
Painted on the right.
Oh, that's a, that's a.
I started wondering, whoa, what are you saying? How can this be more expensive, but I'm just like, let's take, let's take.
It's not protected, and that's a real issue at twenty-five miles an hour.
Protect the way those make those, so what are the, the thing called? Bollards?
No.
A protected, yeah, a protected bike lane has actual concrete, it's raised up.
And and I don't know if there are designs, I, you know, it'd be interesting to look at what would be, you know, if you took a cross-section of Jackson Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are the options that we have to make multimodal, um, transit or lanes or?
The white paint door, you know.
What?
I like this.
Yes, but they also have protected bike lanes.
Because I'm taking cross-sections.
Protected bike lanes.
You're driving on the whole right way. I think he had just, he had just said just redoing the, I forget.
But it's a much lower speed.
Then you see, I don't like my bike.
But the median is so dangerous, the, doing it because of the median is really dangerous because of all those.
You're on Jackson, turn and see it's mine.
Yeah, I, that's probably, that's probably, yeah, down Ann Arbor speed is twenty miles per hour, yeah.
And and, yeah, downtown, heck, you're, you're not even doing, you can't even do twenty-five downtown.
You know, Jackson people pretend they're on the highway. They still think this is the real highway.
Okay, so maybe look at a cross-section, talk to, um, yeah, what, what.
Well, first I'm gonna figure out if we can get the width of the right-of-way and location of utilities. And then we can, I wrote down multimodal plan, like, start talking about a cross-section, but I'm.
You gotta get the facts first.
I gotta get the facts before we can.
Great, once you get the facts, you could do a cross-section in one area.
And and to give an idea, right? But, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think with Commissioner Reiser, probably you you, you think you wanna go and get some kind of buy-in from? But a trustee, that kinda what you.
We're gonna get him starting to think about it.
Uh, well, yeah, cuz ultimately, if there's gonna be a rezoning, or if there's gonna be something, they're gonna wanna have a say in it. By that, I mean, they get the say in it.
Right.
So we wanna make sure they're all in the conversation.
So you wanna, wanna get a say in front of them?
Yeah, you don't wanna rile up the DDA either, you wanna have, you, you wanna build some of that.
No, so so, yeah, I wanna.
So what kind of uh information do you need to go and sell this?
I'm not selling anything, I'm broaching the topic with them to let them know that the planning commission has had a discussion about uh. Kind of form-based development on Jackson Road, that Laura Krebs did an excellent report that kinda talks about it, summarizes it. It's part of our June twenty-second packet, it's also in today's packet, and they can take a look at that, and I'll ask them to take a look at that. And give some thought as to what SIO should do for that stretch of road vis-à-vis what Pittsfield has done. What other townships have done with certain sections that Ann Arbor has done of kind of a heavily traveled roadway.
Perfect, so now should we rush the topic along the lines of Wagner to Zeeb? Or Wagner all the way to Baker? Again, bigger mountain to Glanville, smaller mountain.
I I think, I think it's Wagner, Wagner to to, Wagner to Baker.
Of all the way?
I think it is.
I think, okay, because we are talking about.
Cuz that's where we have water, that's where we have sewer, that's where people are starting to build.
The whole district.
I mean, we had, we had Lake Slate coming in here now, they were Baker.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm thinking, the, really what we're talking about is a multimodal, um, multi-use transit corridor in a way. And, you know, so it, I don't think we're ever gonna design away the, it, it, cuz it's a connector, you know, to to Dexter.
By multimodal, you're talking bus, we're talking biking, we're talking walking, we're talking driving.
Yeah.
Yep.
No boats, no trains for right now, no trains.
No trolleys, yeah.
Exactly.
Not yet. Well, the Dexter, Dexter and Ann Arbor trolley, right?
And that, and that's, that's a road. And that, and that, that's a road, is, is, that's a road whose speed limit is determined not by us, and it's probably based on access points or traffic studies, and that's not something, we don't have too much say on that.
Although it probably would be good, at some point, we have, they have those coffee hours, the road commission.
Yeah.
And it might be good for a few of us to go in and talk a little bit about what we're talking about at SIO, and see kind of how, how they can help us, kind of look at our goals, and, you know, start talking about it early before we come and say, well, this is what we wanna do.
How they can help us. Yeah.
Um, that might be, it might be, it might be a good, good plan to do that.
Oh, no, you can't do that.
So trustees, I'll continue talking with the DDA, I think we need to maybe do some of those coffee hours with the road commission. Um, I did ask, the other piece is the linking of Jackson Road and the river. Um, and I, I think, um, OHM tried to work out a, um, more of a pedestrian bike crosswalk, uh, crossway at Zeeb, and there were some issues with, that was MDOT. And he's, he, I guess they finished kind of what MDOT's willing to do and not willing to do, and it's not very much, but I thought it'd be good to have that information too, and so he's, I've asked him to, he's gonna kind of summarize what those discussions were, what was that?
Who did you say was?
OHM, so it was Matt, yeah, who I guess did that. Um, it, because we don't, that's a real barrier, ninety-four is a huge barrier between our, you know, that, that,
where the majority of people live and where a lot of the recreational resources are, with the river. Anyway, um, yeah, I know this is discussionally, but there is a hand raised, so.
Oh, there is a hand raised?
I don't know, it's up to you, and this is discussion, so.
Oh, Jen, from me, I don't know.
That's fine, okay, Brad.
How did we do?
Not allowing you to talk, Brad Pattinson.
Commissioner Highball allowed.
Yeah.
Hi, Brad. Yeah, and also I think, um, there's some discussion about having a conversation with SEMCOG and see if there are some resources that SEMCOG might be able to provide too. All right.
Thanks, Rob.
That's a good idea.
Maybe good thought.
Um, all right, then, and, so anything else on Jackson Road, we'll just start conversations and get some more facts, and can get familiar with the, the, the comparison that, um, board did.
I'll put it in my, I do a written report to the board for what we, uh, did tonight.
Okay, um, and then moving on to the PUD discussion. Um, in looking at where the PUD is right now, I had a couple of, oh, this is not the JKC one. Um. Um. I had some questions about it because it, the, we were heading in where the PUD was gonna exist without any density bonuses out, outside of the sewer district, and, um.
Wasn't it going to be a formula that actually.
The, the density, yeah, the base density into formula, yes, and then, um.
The base density. I didn't see it.
And then the other q- a question that I had is, and this is sort of like, how do you figure out what, what happens? Because if, if it's just gonna be in the sewer district, and we've got, um,
Bonus.
it, the, um, the bonus is, you know, uh, and where at least sixty percent of the PUD is left open space, and I'm thinking, if you want a compact development, and it talks about like a hundred feet perimeter transition, we're not talking about the same thing. I worry about what we're saying in the PUD makes sense for the residential PUDs that are out there that we're trying to preserve rural character, open space and so forth.
So Jan, for the benefit of me here across from you with a piece of paper in front of me, and, uh, members of the public who are, might be trying to.
But, yeah. Sorry. And talking, where are, where am I, okay.
Page four, yeah.
I'm in page, okay, page two, um, it is section thirty-six dash twenty-four seven, project densities.
Okay.
And.
Bottom of page two.
Bottom of page two, yeah, so it talks about, you know, the bonuses, but I think, how do we have bonuses that are, first of all, the density bonus doesn't apply anymore to the residential area, but we s- so, do we want?
When you say residential, you mean outside the sewer district?
Outside the sewer district.
That's what you mean.
Yes, outside of sewer district, so do we want a hundred-foot perimeters and sixty percent open space in the sewer district? And so I'm, I'm, you know, that's a question that I have.
Yeah.
Um.
So there is two different. Oh no, we're not gonna have the bonus.
We don't have the density.
Well, we'll still have to calculate density, and we still want them clustered, and we still want to preserve open spaces out, but it's not for calculating, um, bonus, just for cal- for, for setting up how dense you can make it outside of the sewer district.
Hmm.
Ready? So in the sewer district, you're right, it's gonna be written differently.
Yeah. And then I also wanted to, that we have, okay, so residential density, it's talking about the density bonuses, and then I'm thinking we should eliminate C, because all of these, um, best management practices should be a hercene to practice. I mean, that should be a requirement of our zoning ordinance to begin with.
Yeah.
Um.
Period.
Yeah, and then we have D, cause we have, we were talking about EV parking, um, and I guess we could keep that in until we have an EV parking ordinance, and then take it out, um. And then the other thing that I wanted to do is align, now they've done, the Inflation Reduction Act has issued its guidance on, um, you can get up to five thousand dollars of a bonus if you design to a certain standard, and what I'd like to see is, you know, our density reflect that same sort of, uh, requirement, so we're saying, we want you to design to the standard, which is a, a, close to a zero-carbon kind of standard.
That isn't the current building standard.
That isn't the current building standard, right? And it, you know, so that there's more of an incentive, because you can get money from the vets, and you get density.
Do they, we don't put that in?
No, they would, we would, but we could say, we've.
The density we could put.
Right, we could put the density, and we could also give the developers a handout saying, this is how it dovetails with our ordinance, so to promote, um, that type of, of.
Taking good notes.
Energy piece, um. Other piece. I had a question, open space preservation, there's a piece there about non-contiguous open space, must, that, it, so it's not contiguous to the the project site.
That's in the zoning name, yeah.
Oh, okay, then, we can't take that out. Uh.
Where, where, what year?
That was, um.
Bottom of three.
Uh, top, yeah, it goes into, yeah, the bottom of three, top of four, it starts talking about that. Um, and then, um, again, buffering from adjacent property, we call for a fifty-foot buffer, and that would not be something we necessarily want in the sewer district. But we would, we might want that in, in, in a PUD that was outside the sewer, sewer district.
Well, it does say in that section that the township formally reduces perimeter setback and buffering in cases where density of proposed build is compatible with adjacent use, so there is a provision in there to reduce that buffer, or, and they did that for Livia.
Yeah.
For Livia, so, um.
When, whenever we say that they may do it, um, it becomes very hard for the planning commission to deny it, even though it's a may, you know what I mean?
Well, but, I mean, that would be something that you would consider, that you could consider.
I know, and it becomes very hard to, to not, I mean, you, you get a developer saying, you allow it, why wouldn't you let us do it? If you know.
But I'm, I'm, I'm trying to say, do you want to, I, I mean, most people, when they look at the zoning ordinance, they say, okay, they want a fifty-foot buffer, so therefore, my buildable land is really here, and, well, if it, maybe they'll give us a little leeway on it, or do we want them to say, no, we wanna build to, you, you know, we want. I don't.
Well, it's also a way to, if they ask, you know, it's like a deviation, right? So we say, we require this fifty-foot buffer, if you don't want to provide the fifty-foot buffer, then what are you doing that compensates the township as a benefit of some sort to reduce that buffer? If it makes sense. Um, but if in the sewer district, you don't think, I mean, fifty feet really isn't.
Isn't that.
Isn't that much? So.
A hundred is.
And if, and if they're unlike uses, you want that, you want them to provide that buffer, so I think allowing for a reduction.
As long as it's clear that the reduction is, yeah, that.
They can ask for it, but that doesn't mean it's granted. And, and if it is granted, that is another, it's a negotiation.
Yeah.
On what, you know, if, if you're given, then what are you giving?
Yeah, that's right, it, cause this is PG, it isn't zoning, it isn't a, it's not, you have to, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's not straight, yeah.
Um, then the other thing is, at the concept review meeting, I wanted to add, um, a, a statement on how the project, um, would meet the carbon neutrality goals, just so right at the very, you know, at that concept meeting, you're already talking about the carbon neutrality goals, and then in the, in the submission, we need to have a narrative about how the project will meet the carbon neutrality goals, so there's sort of the talk of it early on at the concept meeting, and then they have to actually make some statements, and I would also add in the, where is it? Um, that a PUD development agreement shall include, and it needs to include their carbon neutrality plan, um, a site energy use intensity target, this is on page ten. Um, and we can define that, um, for all buildings, so that in the development agreement, we're actually um, getting them to agree to design to certain energy targets. And we're not stating what those have to be, but that's sort of a, that's part of the negotiation with a PUD.
The higher the energy target, the more.
The lower the energy, the EUI, cause it, yeah, the lower the, um, and then the carbon neutrality gets into onsite solar, um, purchase of offsets, all of that, so they, they really put together a, how they're meeting the carbon neutrality. I don't know, but that's my thinking.
Did I miss it, was there a formula in here for calculating the, um, density?
No, uh, but he did talk about that, didn't he? Where is the book? Oh, I thought he was inserting it, maybe under one of the redline, um, cause I thought Doug put that in.
To be determined type of thing.
Yeah, cause he was working on that formula.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, it's supposed to be in here somewhere.
Protectating the density?
Eh, for the underlying density, for, instead of having a parallel plan, there would be a calculation, so we wouldn't have to argue.
Take this out for that, and you take some out for that, and the other. Then there's no hard.
How did, how did Pittsfield deal with the density in form-based, just the FAR, or?
Yeah.
It was just a floor area ratio piece?
And a lot of it's like, they allow like eighty-five percent. I mean, it's, it's quite, but they have to provide the parking, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, the density is based on the height, the design of the building.
What fits.
And the, and what fits, yep, what fits.
As opposed to.
A maximum.
Some stupid parallel, some parallel plan that's difficult to, and, and it costs money to develop those. And so, I guess that would be a question of whether we wanted to do with a FAR in the sewer district, re- rather than, um, yeah, underlying zoning kind of thing, I guess, uh, how do other people see that? Cause if you're really gonna deal with density, what fits, and what the forms and so forth, would, do, do the T ones just use a FAR?
I believe so. Yeah, I don't know, I, I mean, I'm an urban block, I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
But I think at the same time, you, if you're gonna do residential, you, you, you need to provide some sort of pedestrian placemaking amenity, I think that's, that'd be really important, cause you don't wanna just pack things in without some sort of, um, active.
Some plan for how you're gonna get around.
And residential would have different types of, of open space requirements, cause you need more people spaces if you, if it's residential, and some access to recreation, where if it's, um, you know, commercial, you know, you, you know, outdoor restaurants and that type of stuff, makes sense, but you want that, you want that mix, yeah, and so.
Yeah, it's circular, yeah.
Right, right, so, you know, looking at that placemaking piece in the sewer district, I think is stronger than trying to do some sort of, um.
Direct.
Uh, direct density kind of thing, and part, part of that is, and, and Laura, trying to figure out as we create this, what does it result in, and, and, and are we, how do you project that the results will be what you're intending? That's.
Yeah, I believe.
Yeah.
Definitely nothing after.
That's what we have here.
Okay, um, any other, did other people have any?
The only other thing I would say, tying this into our Jackson Road overlay district discussion, it's that it sounds like in the Jackson Road overlay district, we're eliminating, if we were to go with a form-based approach, we would be eliminating the need for a PUD in that area, would you say that's it?
There would be less need for one.
Yeah.
Because you'd be allowing them mixed uses, dah dah dah, it, it would be if they were trying to do something.
Well, yeah, or, um, under the current, um, overlay, you would just modify, maybe you can modify the height that's allowed in the district, and those types of things, and then you still allow mixed use as a conditional use, there's still an option. And so, for example, the Honey Creek Business Park, if, if, um, you modify the height of the, in the Jackson Road overlay district to be a maximal four feet in height.
Four stories.
Four stories, I'm sorry, um, it's getting late.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah.
Um.
We're about.
We feel you.
Done, yeah. Uh. They, you could still get a conditional use, they wouldn't have the need to get a PUD. So, I mean, I think, so, it, 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 it may not necessarily be a complete rezoning to a form-based, but some of those modifications within the overlay might accommodate some of this, additional mixed use.
There would still be a, a few different ways to do it.
Yes, and.
But, but form-based would definitely.
Yeah.
Would eliminate the use.
Hey, but one of the things, one of the like concerns that I have, just, I, a hypothetical, where you come in and you do a mixed use, but it's this building surrounded by parking, this building surrounded by parking, this building surrounded by parking doesn't get us what we want.
You don't park for what you want.
And so, if the zoning allows for that, then we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get it, so how do we say, you can't have buildings surrounded by parking,
We're gonna get it.
it needs to have more of a cohesive placemaking.
This form.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, a lot of that's, yeah, a lot of that comes. Well, a lot of that's, yeah, a lot of that comes as through, through the pre-development meeting process and through concept plans. I mean, part of that is, I, I, how we do it in Pittsfield is through that process, right? If someone were to come to us and we don't like how, we don't think it's a connected project, we don't like, um, we think it's disjointed.
Who's we?
We, the, the planning staff.
Yeah, the planning staff, not, by the time it gets to the.
But no, we, we, you know, by the time it gets to planning commission, that's fixed.
I know.
It's fixed, but you have pre-development meetings and one of you is part of that, those, those concept meetings. And so that's part of understanding what the body, what this body wants. And moving forward as, as that, as that development process progresses.
But if it's a by right, they can just keep that moving.
If it's a by right, yeah, they don't have to, I mean, yeah.
So if it allows the, the individual buildings with all the parking around it, then they're gonna, they, you can't stop?
Well, I think you can, you can, you can encourage things, I think, I think you have more power than you think.
But I think part of that is, i- i- is, is wanting any development to have that sense of place and not be. You know, building, parking, building, parking, building, parking, and not have connectivity, not having all those things that you want. And so I guess that's the challenge. And, and it is more straightforward not to do a PUD, I mean, from a development process. But a PUD, there's a lot more negotiation. Okay.
It's almost ten o'clock, anyone to wrap up?
Yep. Yep, we have our minutes, I think.
Yeah.
And reports.
My report speaks for itself. Just move the minute, so if you have any questions on our report, you later, call me.
Anyone else have reports, um. River Watership Council or offices, you have your, the road commission, the road advisory.
Rack.
Back, okay.
PPP, we're meeting this Wednesday, four o'clock.
ZBA, we haven't met, I reported last, all right.
I'm just getting it on the record, I'm not saying I had to, uh, to go back, but we did skip over the zone, the solar zoning portion.
Yes. Oh, we did, yeah, we, um. Thank you, um. Yeah, Bob and I went to a, um, a workshop and Sarah Mills presented that. And, um, and Laura, you've worked with that before, right?
Yeah.
And so the thought would be, is it has a, a basic ordinance that we can just start from and, and, and work on.
Modify it to see how it fits.
Well, just one thing, um, currently, solar arrays and rooftop solar for residents or commercial are approved through zoning compliance.
Yeah, one thing.
It's about the easiest way you can do it. So we, we already allow for, um, solar, you know, independent solar arrays and roof solar in the township.
Accessory.
As, as an accessory, they have to meet, you know, solar arrays have to meet the accessory or the setbacks of the district they're working in, so it's a sign off. Um, that is not the case in most communities or workplaces. We wouldn't recommend changing that, is what I guess I'm saying.
But we don't. No, we don't want to change that, but there might be some, you know, like allowing it to go into the setbacks, like Dex can. There could be some, you know, easing of it.
Maybe.
And we need to talk about making it a principal use, um, and how we want, if we want to do that and if we want to accommodate.
Where.
The, yeah, how, what that looks like, I think that's the bigger part of us. So that if we have the option to do community solar, it's permitted.
Well, first I think you need to, we need to determine whether there's any way to tie into a grid that, any property that would tie into the grid that makes sense. Because a lot of these large solar are very strategically placed next to a, you know, a station, a, a transmitter.
Of course. Distribution.
Huge distribution station or, and they're not, they don't, as of right now, they don't like to carry those lines any long distance, so.
But this would be, community solar by definition is five megawatt, from the legislative, um, piece, yeah.
I see.
Right.
So we're, now, we couldn't do community solar because it isn't permitted. So that I want to make sure that we have an ordinance that when the legislative, legislation passes, that we can do it. And so it isn't a huge thing, it's the, the high bit, maximum five megawatts, which is, is pretty large, but, and there may not be a spot for it, but there may be some spots for it. But right now it isn't permitted, and you can't get DTE to tell you whether or not it works or not.
But it probably does.
But for instance, you could still do it and distribute it to multiple or different property units. And so it'd be worth looking at, so, and that, we'll know by the end of twenty twenty-four whether they get it through the legislative session.
So there's the beginning of the solar zoning ordinance discussion.
Yep. All right, minutes. Did anyone have any corrections on the minutes?
Move the minutes as written.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, and that was, uh, Hyde and Charma.
Sure.
Keep saying, because I mean, Rakesh, very well.
It's not luck. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, okay, um, all right, then, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, all right, minutes are approved. That was, any other?
So I, I had some questions about this map.
This map, yep.
Is, Laura, is that your map? Or Doug's map?
It's, it's our map, yeah, I would say.
Okay, uh, I just had, it, and I can talk to you later, but the yellow CIO township, is, is that protected and non-protected land?
It's all CIO township land, yes.
And I'm just wondering, what's the purpose of this? It's, it's like vacant land or land owned by municipal, like there's more vacant land, it's just not municipally owned.
Correct.
So, so.
Yeah, we should title it.
Kind of like vacant municipal land, and, but like, I'm just wondering if there could be, like, for CIO township, CIO township protected or CIO township not protected?
We talked about that, um, so Doug, Doug asked for this map to be generated and I wasn't, I wasn't part of the instructions, so.
No, this is, this is good for round one.
So if you want to see which ones are protected, I would say ninety-five percent of these properties, the township owns are in an insurgency or some sort. Um, the, the small parcels are, are like the water tower and pumping stations, and there's only a couple that I'm really not sure what they are. Um, but most of those, yes, are probably.
And then, like Saginaw Forest isn't on here, and I don't know if that's.
Well, that's not owned by the township.
U of M.
No, but we've got, but we've got Washington County, Washington County, I'm just wondering.
It's owned by U of M.
That's what I asked for it, I did, I forgot about U of M.
U of M owns Saginaw Forest.
And, and is there, is there some U of M stuff that's behind, uh, Park Ridge?
Maybe.
Right, yeah, uh, yeah.
Is it like, they called the U of M Lake or whatever?
So. So what I would suggest is we do a color for CIO conserved, a color for CIO utilities and we add U of M owned, and we can get that from.
Not, because, yeah, because we want the parcel that's on the statehood, that's a big parcel.
But that's not utility, it's not existing utility, like a pump station.
Right, no, I, I can see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Like, no, you can't plant, you can't develop it.
Right, right.
You know, if this includes the.
And like the water tower site.
You know, if this includes the, uh, the parcels that we were discussing at the last, at the last meeting, it does.
I believe it does.
Yeah. Yep, okay, so if we modify that, then I think it, it'll be a good reference document. Thank you for bringing that up.
All right, anything I liked in the meeting? Move to adjourn.
So support, support, okay, all those in favor, oh, that was a.
Oh, do we, oh, I'm sorry.
Riser.
Yeah, Riser, aye.
Yeah, let Chris catch up, okay? All those in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed, all right, we are adjourned at ten oh one.